Get him.
Mr. Dowell, I'm not sure yours is on. Can we have some technical assistance? Thank you, Dr. Beers.
Hello, okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dowell.
Madam Chair, sorry about that. I certify that to best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Surza.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to item 3.1, Ms. Surza, would you please take the role?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Dowell.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Item 3.2, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Surza.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to announcements and superintendent's report, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we prepare for the start of a school year, I would like to remind our community that it is not too late to register children for kindergarten. Although learning will look a little bit different during remote learning, teachers are ready to engage students in skill-building activities, morning meetings, and relationship building to promote their academic and social and emotional growth. Beginning last week, teachers from across the division have been giving families a glimpse at kindergarten in the virtual world through videos posted on our social media channels. Take a look at these examples from Laurel Lane and Matoka Elementary Schools.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Klein. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Laurel Lane Elementary School. In kindergarten, we love to start our days with something we call morning meeting. We meet at the carpet and we greet one another in different ways. We share on a topic, we do an activity, and we read a morning message that tells us about the day ahead. When we learn remotely, we can still have morning meeting, but we will meet in our electronic platform instead of on the carpet in our classroom. By sharing and listening during morning meeting, we learn to engage in conversation, take turns, share, and listen, and also how to ask and answer questions. I can't wait to start morning meetings with you starting in September.
Hi, dear boys and girls. My name is Mrs. Mall, and I teach kindergarten at Matoka Elementary School. One thing that we learn in the fall is how to write our name, and also how to recognize the letters in our name. One way we do that at school is we use magnetic letters. We can mix the letters up, and then we have to try and figure out how to put them back in order. We start with the big uppercase letter, and then we put the other letters right after it. K-A-T-I-E. One way we can practice this at home if you don't have magnetic letters is you can write the letters of your name on little pieces of paper. You can mix them up and put them back together, just like you would do a puzzle.
Hi, boys and girls. I'm Mrs. Abrams. I'm also a kindergarten teacher, and I'm going to show you another way that we practice how to write our names at school. Practice with a whiteboard and dry erase markers, and we sing a little song to help us about where we start the formation of our letters. We always start our letters at the top. We always start our letters at the top. Always start our letters at the top. Then I write my letters. All get better, 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 as I always start my letters at the top. You can practice that, too, at home, and Mrs. Turner is going to show you how to do that at home. If you don't have a dry erase board and a marker, you can also use paper and crayons. We like to call this rainbow writing. So, I'm going to come on this side because I'm right-handed. I would start with one color and write my whole name with one color, and then to make it rainbow writing, I choose a new color, and I'm going to write my name
Start the letters at the top.
So, practice starting at the top and boring my letters correctly so I can learn how to write my name. Now we'll do another color. You can do it as many colors as you'd like. These are some ways you can practice learning and writing your name at school and at home. Have fun learning!
A little pressure being the last one.
Except starting all the letters at the top.
Families can pre-register their children for kindergarten online at wjccschools.org/kindergarten. Madam Chair, that completes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Were there additional updates from board members? I know I do have one. I did want to congratulate our superintendent for receiving the PTA Family Engagement Award recently. Dr. Heron has demonstrated the importance of engaging families in decision-making, recognizing that that's essential to student success. We just wanted to applaud our superintendent for receiving that recent award. And if there are no additional comments or announcements, we're going to move into citizens' comments. It's my understanding we folks have called in on a pre-recorded line, and we will turn to that now.
Hi, my name is Leanne Meyer. I have two high school students at Jamestown, and I would like to go to the four classes per semester rather than eight classes. My kids are not going to be able to do any early college. We go with the eight-class schedule. Please take that into account. Thank you. Bye.
Hi, my name is Beth Duncan. My daughter Monica will be a senior this year at Jamestown High School. I would very much like to request that the classes be semester, not year-long, to... And it would make her second semester so much better to be able to apply all of her needs to her college courses. I highly recommend this. There's no reason for us not to. I'm looking forward to listening to your...
My name is Lily Paluzzi, and I have two students at Jamestown High School. I wanted to comment that in view of the current coronavirus situation and the remote school operation for the fall, it does not make any sense for the school to have year-long courses. So, I would like the board to consider returning to the original semester-long courses. I think this is best for our students, and also it will give the opportunity for students to start afresh the new courses in the spring semester if it factors in vaccine and an ability to go back to school. Thank you for listening to my request, and I hope the board seriously consider it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tessa Anderson. I have a kindergartner in her first grader that will be attending Matoka. I wanted to call and inquire about the timeline. I'm concerned, and I know other parents share that, with how long it's taking for us to learn about the plan, specifically when our children will be doing the virtual learning. With a dual-working parent household like we are at lots of other homes that don't have a stay-at-home parent, we really need to be able to plan our work and our lives around this. I'm hearing we might not find out until the week before school opens, which is just simply unacceptable. I certainly don't agree with the schools not opening. I believe that we should have been able to do that for parents, and also I wanted to ask about why kindergarteners are being treated the same as 12th grader high schoolers, children that are going to need direct supervision versus children that may be able to do some virtual learning on their own. Please respond to options for parents that are working and cannot sit there side by side with their parents all day, with their children all day long. Thank you.
I believe that concludes our citizens' comments. Dr. Heron, since there were three callers who asked again about the block schedule, the semester versus the year-long, I know we reiterated that that was sent a decision, the decision has been made with regard to what that's going to look like.
Yes, Madam Chair, that decision has been made, and staff will reach out to every parent who called this evening. They reached out to all of the parents from the last meeting, and were able to work them through some of the issues, and we will certainly do the same again tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Moving on to item 6.1, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Approval of minutes from July 14th and August 4th, and personnel actions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Surza.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to item 7.1, our action item, financial report and monthly bills and payrolls for July 20. Your motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the financial report and monthly bills and payroll for the month ended July 30, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Sure.
Mr. Kelly?
I noticed in the back of the report, there's lots of purchase orders, over 25,000. Those are level-of-effort purchase orders, right? Those aren't necessarily... You don't have to pay for them, like from pet dairy for 198,000 if we don't use that much milk.
Correct. Each July, we encumber, you know, our purchase orders for our annual contracts, insurances, utility.
And they're all level of effort, so they're not, that's not spent money, that's just a vehicle to use up to that level.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, on page five, when you look at the cost centers, some of them have, you know, this early in the year, you'd expect the percentage spent to be fairly low. Some of them, some of the cost centers, technology services and media and technology services are, have used a significant percentage of their budget. If you could just speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
That goes hand-in-hand with the purchase orders. The percentage used on page five also factors in the encumbrances for the year, so money we've set aside to make those payments for our annual contracts and such.
So, is that typical for this time of year in those cost centers, or is it related to our virtual learning?
That is typical.
Typical. Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for Ms. Ewing? You have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, Ms. Surza.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 7.2, approve the budget calendar for FY '22.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the fiscal year 2022 budget calendar.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Cook?
I just appreciate the updates that staff made based on discussion. Thank you very much.
Any additional comments or discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Surza.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 7.3, authorization to permit the city county use of school buses. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize superintendent or the superintendents designate to approve requests from the City of Williamsburg and James City County to use school buses through September 30, 2021.
Second.
Thank you. There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Surza.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Item 7.4, revised policy JN Appendix A Student Fee Schedule for School Year 2020-2021.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the revisions to policy JN Appendix A Student Fee Schedule to, for school year 2020-2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Surza.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to information and discussion items. Item 8.1, return to learn. I will hand it over to Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we're going to start our return-to-learn presentation with a presentation from the Peninsula Health District. If you recall, members weren't able to come last time, and we're delighted that we have two representatives this evening. Dr. Dromina, Director of Peninsula Health District, and also Mr. Pierce, Emergency Coordinator of the Peninsula Health District. Thank you very much for giving up time and out of your very busy schedule right now to be here to present some information this evening. Thank you.
Good evening. As was mentioned earlier, my name is Dr. Natasha Dromina, and I am the District Director for the Peninsula Health District, which includes the Williamsburg and James City County Municipality. I'm here this evening with my emergency coordinator, Kevin Pierce, to discuss some strategies and just to kind of give you a view and lend some insight about how we are viewing the current situation as it relates to COVID from the public health perspective.
Oh, he doesn't shoot through all the...
There we go. Okay, so we'll start with the big picture, the macro lens, if we will. Our objective in public health is to decrease illness and death, simply put. Decreasing excess morbidity, illness, and mortality deaths. According to the CDC, that number is over 200,000 and counting. When we are looking at illness and death, we're assessing different things, and one of, several of them include the risk to specific groups. These are older-aged members of our community, as well as those with comorbidities, those who have, who are disadvantaged, or have a lack of resources to health care. This also includes looking at the cost and capacity of the health care systems in the community, public services, the cost and utility, and logistics of public protections, as well as the risk and utility of mass gatherings, and that would include schools or any congregate settings. Now, when we look at statistics, we start from the macro level, and then we work our way to the micro level. So, from the macro level, we're looking at the eastern region. And as is demonstrated here, this is an ongoing trend. We have the confirmed cases. It's hard to distinguish between the confirmed and the probable cases, which is the light blue at the tip of the, of the bar. But the important thing, and the most noticeable thing, is that with the seven-day average, we do notice an increase that began towards the end of June into July. At the peak, that is consistent with the time that the eastern region health directors got together and made some proposals that was presented to the governor to mitigate the increase, and it appears that we are noticing a positive response. The numbers are still elevated, but the rate of increase in new cases has shown a decrease. This year is specific to Peninsula. If you notice, obviously, James City and Williamsburg on this list, we primarily, our indicators that we look at are the case rates, the hospitalization rates, as well as the, the death rates or fatality rates. So, obviously, with cases, the more populous communities, Newport News being one of the more populous cities in the Peninsula District, would have higher numbers. But the objective of this slide is just to demonstrate that we still are noticing a high burden of cases throughout the Peninsula. Specifically to James City County and Williamsburg, similar to the graph looking at the eastern region, this is looking at combined James City and Williamsburg. Similar to the eastern region, there was a gradual increase towards the end of June into July, noticing a gradual decrease. So, there's a gradual ebb and flow of the, the rates of positivity rates. Now, if you look at the numbers up top, the current day, seven-day average at the case positivity is 6.9%. So, 10% is the threshold that we become concerned that some interventions need to take place. So, our goal is to be not just under 10%, but really under 5%. So, as you can see, even though we're not at 10%, we're still not below 5 either, so there is still some work to be done.
Doctor, is that Peninsula or Williamsburg-James City?
Williamsburg-James City.
That particular graph was the Peninsula Health District doc.
Okay. Thank you for that correction. So, when, when we are assessing the, the status of infection and burden in a community, how we identify that is through testing. Testing is a snapshot in time. It doesn't predict future infection. It just gives us an idea of where we're at, kind of a baseline. Now, there are various tests that are out now. The, the gold standard still is PCR testing. The cost of testing, that includes not just the collection, but also the processing, laboratory fees, they average, but the average range is about $150 per test, and that varies with the laboratory. The frequency of testing is very important, especially when we're trying to assess how critical the, the disease burden is in a given community. So, having baseline testing will give us a sense of the prevalence, but serial testing is how we assess if there's a increase or transmission in the community. The current policy for quarantine includes baseline testing, as I said, and on average, we look at testing every three to four days until this period has passed. That is the standard as far as serial testing is concerned. Now, as far as public and private organizations, some choose to have contracts with laboratories separately. The laboratory do have variations in their turnaround time. That has recently been a concern, the delay in turnaround time with labs, but that has been improving. So, speaking to that, the two primary private sector labs are Quest and LabCorp. I believe LabCorp is the, is the company that VDH has a contract with. So, the time from sample collection to result does vary, as I said earlier. For those who are in the hospital, the average is 24 to 48 hours. Now, three to five days is the average overall. Now, sometimes the, the turnover can be up to 10 days, and those tend to be with commercial laboratories. For instance, the, the testing that may be done at your CVS or your Walgreens or a private laboratory. Now, this turnaround time does not have a, it has an impact on our ability to identify cases and to report the, the results. So, when we look at the databases that is accessible through the VDH website, this is all based on the info... this is all based on the information that we receive from labs. And so, of course, if there's a delay, pretty much any graph that we have is going to have a, a lag time of about 10 to 14 days. Regarding testing capacity, when we, um, are measuring the ability for, our ability to adequately test and identify the prevalence of disease in a community, we look at several things. We look at the accessibility. There are five sites in the historic triangle area. Um, there are 12 sites on the Peninsula that service over half a million residents on the Peninsula. There is a rapid testing site in Richmond. Hospital systems do offer testing for their patients. Um, this testing is also applied to certain EMS agencies and symptomatic patients. And, uh, home testing is also being offered primarily by LabCorp. Now, case positivity. Case positivity is an indicator of adequate access and volume to testing. Essentially what it is, is the percent of completed PCR testing encounters that are positive. Now, there's different thresholds and criteria for case positivity. WHO was less than 5%. Our threshold, as I said earlier, is less than 10%. CDC is less, uh, specific, just as low as possible. This threshold varies depending on the resources available for testing, how much testing we can do, where we perform the testing. So case positivity really is a relative indicator. It isn't something that is going to be consistent, um, in that, because the resources aren't, aren't consistent, um, depending on the population that, that you're actually targeting. Gating criteria, this is a criteria, um, that the CDC primarily uses, and I know the print is very small, but the point in, in, um, having this slide is to demonstrate the, the logic behind interventions that, that come based on the recommendations that we receive. Now, we look at disease burden, we look at prevalence, how, how much disease is actually present in the community. And then we also look at trends. And a trend is basically the increase or decrease of new cases. And the gating criteria essentially looks at 14 week, uh, 14 days, excuse me, 14 day span to identify the presence of disease at 14 day intervals, and also the increase or rate of increase or decrease of infection. So the, the highlighted areas, um, speak to burden, and the second one speaks to the trend. Now, gating criteria, as, as it applies specifically to James City and Williamsburg, this goes into more detail. The colors demonstrate the thresholds that I was referring to earlier. The first, um, row, that speaks to burden. And as we can, um, identify, I believe the first, um, graph, graphic to the left is James City.
Correct.
Okay. And, um, the, the other one being Williamsburg. So as you can see, um, this falls in line with the increase that we, um, identified in July, starting in July. We look more so at current day, which will be reading the graph from the left to the right. Uh, we noticed that with burden, it still is above our desired threshold, even though it is decreasing. Um, similarly with the trend, which I believe is the second, well, the second is case positivity. Or for both, and then the third is outbreak. And the fourth, oh, the fourth.
Healthcare worker.
Okay. So, basically, looking at these two graphics is to demonstrate that the number of cases are decreasing. Um, but the percent positivity, the outbreaks, those are still increasing in number. Now, the rate of increase may be slowing down, but it still has a positive slope. And so the slope, the direction is what we pay attention to, not just the, um, the shape of the slope or how steep the slope is.
Doctor, is this publicly available, these graphs?
These graphs are, um, some of them are, right?
All graphs, with the exception of these, are publicly available and can be evaluated by going through the VDH coronavirus website. These are currently not, the ones that you're looking at are currently not available for sharing as far as the data is concerned, other than the graphics that we've provided.
Thank you. So basically, what are we suggesting, what can be done at this point? Non-pharmaceutical interventions is still the, the standard. It's still, basically, until we, um, develop, uh, have a, uh, access to a antiretroviral or a vaccine, non-pharmaceutical interventions is pretty much all we, we have. So, uh, mask use, hand washing, distancing, avoiding large crowds, social distancing, all of those things are preventative. Routine, especially flu vaccinations, are going to be particularly important. Um, we've already seen indication that the rate of, uh, flu vaccinations, and just vaccinations in general, have decreased since COVID, and so that's particularly concerning. There's a contact alert app called COVID Wise that was launched by VDH. And, um, this is an app that quickly notifies users if they have been potentially exposed to someone who tested positive for COVID. We also work hard to avoid misinformation, to clarify, but also to be honest about what we know and what we don't know. With COVID, a lot of the information that, that we receive is, is real time science. So we're learning about the virus as we go along. So, um, those areas where we can, um, try to keep people informed and up to date, is an ongoing, uh, project for us. Um, avoiding complacency, COVID, um, is present. And even though, um, the presentation varies from mild to severe, uh, we do anticipate that this is an infection that is not going to be going away anytime soon. So people still need to remain vigilant about prevention. And, uh, lastly, I mentioned, um, the coronavirus vaccine, and that is ongoing research. Um, we don't have a sense of when that vaccine would be coming out. It does vary because they're still in stages of research development. We're hopeful to have some sense of, um, having a vaccine that we can actually distribute by the late fall or winter. But again, um, we're not certain about that. So things to take into consideration, um, when we're doing our planning, starts primarily with the risk factors. What are the risk factors for COVID-19 infection? Close contact, um, hygiene practices. Those are two key areas that we know that the infection is transmitted. When it comes to students, they may have less severe illness. Younger, uh, people may have less severe symptoms. But we also have to take into consideration the staff. We have to take into consideration everyone within the environment, not just the, the students. Something to keep in mind is that 15% of employees do travel or live outside of their place of employment. So beyond looking at the people who reside in the community, we also have to think about, um, the commuter traffic and, and interaction there. Students can still serve as vectors of COVID-19. We do know that COVID can be asymptomatic. So people can, um, unknowingly transmit the, the infection to others. And that infection can present differently in someone else. The current status of, um, protective equipment must also be considered. We are, um, ensuring that communities have access to the protective equipment that they need, including, um, EMS workers and healthcare systems, congregate settings. So our ability to do that, especially in the event of, uh, exposure or potentially an outbreak, is something to take into consideration to make sure that we actually have those things in place before we, um, consider expanding or, or opening up. The next consideration are, again, what resources do we have available? Now, the resources that we've added due to the COVID response has included case investigators. There's a lot of, um, discussion about contact tracing and case investigators. Uh, case investigators are key and instrumental to our contact tracing efforts. And, um, making sure that we have those investigators to initiate the contact tracing effort is very important. COVID Wise is also going to be an important resource because that empowers individuals to know what their risk potentially could be and could, in turn, uh, motivate people to get tested as well. Uh, VDH is constantly developing and upgrading data and software for contact tracing. Um, the data and software that, that we use has been critical to, to our ability to identify infections in the community as quickly as, as possible. The surge capability for outbreak response. So the surge capability includes not just a surgeons of staff for contact tracing, but also resources, um, including protective equipment. Um, the public information campaign is also very critical. A lot of, um, our COVID response goes beyond just identifying where the infection is, but also prevention. Since this is an infection that does not have one set of specific symptoms, you can be asymptomatic, or you can have severe symptoms, it's important to, um, educate the community. With educating them, they become more empowered and feel like they know what is going on or have a better sense of that. So, um, continuing the non-pharmaceutical interventions, educating people about vaccines and making vaccines more, um, acceptable and understandable, as well as herd immunity, which essentially is, um, the phenomenon that occurs once enough people are, are vaccinated, and then the, the overall, um, immunity of the community increases. Speaking of the vaccine, um, things to think about when we are talking about, uh, vaccines or, um, distributing vaccines. Um, we have to think about how much vaccine is really available, and when is it going to be distributed? We still don't have the answer to that. When it comes to distribution, who are the high risk groups? How do we distribute, um, these resources to those communities? How do we dispense, um, these vaccines? Is it at schools? Is it, um, through the, the local government or local community? And the last point being, the actual points of dispensing, whether it's through healthcare organizations, through the hospital, or, or otherwise. So, um, to wrap things up, um, essentially, where we're at right now, we are at a high burden of, of disease. Um, the trend, as I said earlier, is decreasing, but that burden is still high. There is no way of knowing if it's going to continue to decrease and decrease into, uh, a level that is, uh, at a, uh, ideal threshold, or if it's going to increase again. Because transmission is still considered substantial, which is, which is higher. So our goal is essentially to decrease transmission as low as possible. Our additional goal is to make sure that we do have adequate testing. PCR testing is a gold standard, but rapid antigen testing is, is also something that's being, uh, utilized. And VDH is developing guidance for healthcare providers to determine how to use rapid testing, um, accurately and appropriately. And as I said earlier, we are watching the, um, development of COVID and how it is, um, infecting people and how, um, it is causing illness and morbidity in people real time. This is an infection that we've never seen before. So there are still a lot of questions that we don't have the answers to. Additional information, which, um, Kevin had referenced earlier, is at, uh, this website here, uh, vdhvirginia.gov coronavirus. That website, uh, does have some of the graphics that, um, I presented, as well as, um, some of the, um, explanations for the, the different indicators and criteria. With that, I'm going to end and open for questions.
Ms. Young?
Yes, thank you very much for being here. I appreciate your time. Um, I just had a question because I, I was on the dashboard earlier today. And it says it's updated daily, but these figures are not the same that's on the dashboard, just for your information. Because earlier today, I had that there were 71 people that had been hospitalized in the, in the Williamsburg, James City County, and 23 deaths. That's quite a disparity between 158 and 62. So just for your information, but I also, uh, I had, had called the Peninsula Health Center or the, um, Health, whatever you're calling this, a couple of weeks ago, and I'd asked for a breakdown of how, across age groups, how the deaths were distributed. They told me they couldn't give me that data. Is there a reason I can't, uh, find it, or am I looking the wrong place? Or what would you recommend I do? I'm, because I'm interested in that.
So in general, any, um, data that is shared with the public, obviously, is not, it cannot have, uh, patient identifying information. So that type of information is not something that, that we are legally permitted to, to disseminate. Um, general questions, um, regarding, um, certain groups, um, hospitalization rates, fatality rates, those are things that should be, um, documented in the, the database. So I'm not, if that, those criteria is what you are specifically looking for, really, your, your best bet is for, to come to the local, um, department, because we would have that information. Now, if it's specific to location or anything that may identify, uh, certain people or, or a certain location, then, um, that may be something that, that we're limited into what we, you know, would, would provide to you.
No, I, and I'm not interested in specific cases. I'm more interested in cases across ages, like from one to six, or, you know, 65 to 80, or whatever.
If I, if I might, the, the information with, is on the demographics tab located on that dashboard page.
Okay, thank you.
And there is a breakdown by generalized age groups. There's also a breakdown by ethnicity.
Okay, and then I just had a question about, uh, comorbidities. You stated that comorbidities, you referred to socioeconomic, but doesn't that also include things like diabetes, uh, high blood pressure, other things, other than socioeconomic?
Yes, comorbidities include medical comorbidities.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, also, uh, on the dashboard or on the information you gave us tonight, is that the, do you, do you identify the number of deaths per week? You said there was a seven day period.
So the seven day period is related to the number of cases.
New cases.
Of new cases.
Okay, and then on COVID Wise, you said that you could look on there to see if you. to see if you needed to be tested.
No, COVID-wise is an app that allow, that notifies users if they may have been exposed to COVID or to someone who was positive. And with that information, that may motivate the person to get testing because they are now aware that they potentially have been exposed.
But how do you do that without identifying? Do you identify an event or a place so that people would know that they might have been exposed?
The app has been designed and set up where the person does not receive information about the potential, the infected person. So identifying information has been removed. There's a process where they use a token. And if you go to the VDH website, there's actually a tutorial that actually goes through the process and how it actually prevents and removes identifying information.
I've got it. I'll show it to you later.
Okay, thank you. I'd appreciate that because, I mean, I'm, do you have to sign in? I'm just trying to understand if a person is listening. Okay, I'll talk to Julie. She's got it. Thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to follow up with that. I know that institutions, large ones around the country, they can pinpoint the actual location of individuals who have the virus. I'm puzzled that we can't be told what neighborhoods, what areas within the community, there seems to be an increase or, you know, there's been a spike. Because I think it would be helpful to know that as, knowing the location so that you might avoid it. So I don't, I understand about the privacy issue and all that sort of thing. But we're in a situation where I believe that should be helpful information. I'm sure you have it, the health officials have it because you know where the reports are coming from. And so you, you know, you look at a map and you, okay, I see it. But I guess the general public doesn't have access to that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And why?
Regulatory requirements here in the state of Virginia prohibit the sharing of that kind of information by the health department.
Right.
So it's a statutory issue.
I'm not talking about people. I'm talking about cases and locations of cases. You're not allowed to do that.
That's correct. There's a restricted number of individuals for any particular environment. It probably doesn't apply quite so much in high-density environments, but it certainly does in rural environments. So the statutory requirement and the interpretation of that statute is done at the Richmond level.
And what's the rationale that Richmond gives?
For us-
Did you say it's because it's the regulation? That's your answer?
It's not just statute, but it's statute and regulation.
Right, right, okay.
Yes, sir.
That's helpful information. Because, you know, we know folks up in Richmond and I'm curious about that. So I will probably pursue that. Thank you.
Ms. Cook, and then I'll circle back to you, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have some questions as it relates to schools. Do you envision a future in which the health department works with schools for serial testing for control? I mean, do you see that ever in the future?
Well, we are, as we advise and counsel school districts, testing and what that looks like is going to be a part of the discussion. How we assist schools or school systems in obtaining testing and making recommendations for frequency of testing, we would be a part of that process as well. So as far as provision of testing, I don't know if that's the question, if that's the question you're alluding to. That would be ideal, but again, I don't know if, how practical that would be. It would depend on the resources that are available. So that's something that I think would be ideal to be able to, if not provide the actual testing, the resources for access to the testing.
So if testing is part of, part of a program to keep, to try to keep kids in school, would it come, would the drive behind that come from a school division or from the health department? Do you understand what I'm asking?
No. I'm not, I'm not sure if it, which side it would come from. I mean, from the health department perspective, our objective is to assist the community, the school system, in decreasing the risk of infection. We have to be able to identify it. We have to be able to protect others from that infection. So that's always ultimately our objective. How we obtain that, it is a collaborative effort between the school system and what the needs of the community are and how we can assist in that objective.
Right, I mean, so I get that your goal is to decrease excess illness and death and our goal is to educate kids the best way we know how, which we all agree is in school. So what I'm trying to understand is if testing, serial testing to identify outbreaks helps with that, as a school board member, I'm curious, do we sit back and wait for the health department to do that or is that something that school divisions need to pursue or think about independently?
Some school systems are thinking about it independently.
Could you tell us a little bit about that, please?
I don't know specifically in my district or in our region, but I know nationally there are different school systems that are looking at many different options as far as testing. And a lot of that depends on the resources that are available to the school system.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I realize resources would be involved, but I'm just trying to understand process and jurisdiction and how that would come about. Because at the end of the day, one of my takeaways from your presentation is that serial testing is important if you want to run a big organization. And so that was my first question. My second question is, I've been reading about other school divisions around the country that have been asking people, requiring, but they can't, you know, they can't enforce it, to restrict their movement before returning to school. So if they know that school, they're going to return in some form or fashion, you know, two weeks, two weeks prior, don't go anywhere. Do you, do you see any validity in that? Could you share your thoughts on that, please?
Some school systems and universities do require testing, some form of baseline testing before students enter campus. PCR testing is the gold standard. Rapid antigen testing is not an ideal test for that kind of screening. Again, as I alluded to, testing is a snapshot. So if you're going to have even a PCR testing, there has to be something in place to either provide access to testing or whether the school system or university actually performs testing on site. But that one snapshot, that one test, is not going to be an indicator for infection throughout the entire semester.
But so asking people to stay put and restrict their potential exposure to the virus prior to coming to school is something that you think is, seeing that? Have, not, I'm not talking about just testing. I'm talking about restricting movement and staying home.
Well, what I have seen is that people have been tested or recommend testing. And then if people are symptomatic, then they isolate until the test result comes.
And then I have one more question, but I do want to say everyone in my household has COVID-wise, the app. So, you know, so far, no activity on it. But, and then my last question has to do with the data I asked that's not publicly available. I guess it's a hybrid question. First of all, will that become publicly available? Are, is it being regularly shared with superintendents and officials who have to make decisions about opening or not their institutions? And then is, are those the dashboards that inform your statement that we're in substantial community transmission? So it's several questions embedded in one. But basically, I'm hoping that that data is shared regularly with Dr. Heron and her colleagues.
Okay, so the first question was regarding, remind me?
The dashboards that you showed that are not publicly available, the ones that are kind of, were sort of-
Okay, so to answer your first question, VDH is in the process of developing or formatting a dashboard that has more information that can be publicly shared. When that will be developed, I don't know, but I know that they are working on it. To your second question, repeat that?
Are you regularly sharing, because it's not publicly available, are you regularly sharing it with the key decision makers, Dr. Heron and her colleagues in your, in the Peninsula Health District?
The information is shared with stakeholders. Stakeholders do not have direct access to some of the information.
If I could just add to that, Ms. Cook. Mr. Pierce has just reached out to regional superintendents in the Peninsula. Starting, I believe, this Thursday, we're going to be having regular weekly meetings to get information. I don't know if it involves an update on the dashboard. I know I have only seen a piece of it once and that was at a VDOE webinar-type meeting.
Thank you very much.
It's available on demand for the superintendents. I have the capabilities after the initial state meeting to be able to pull the information down and then provide those graphics.
Thank you. That's wonderful. And then I just, can you, I think I heard you say that we're right now in, our district is in substantial community transmission. Is that correct? Did I hear that correct?
Correct.
And when that changes, you do inform?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all I had. Thank you so much. I appreciate both of you being here very much.
Ms. Young?
Well, she answered my question. Thank you very much. It was-
Additional questions?
I just had a question about the stats that you guys use to, are you getting the results from every private lab or just LabCorp?
We're getting the results from multiple labs. There are challenges with getting that information because sometimes the demographic information is not accurate. There is a delay. As I said earlier, sometimes the delay is as long as 10, 14 days. That time lag has improved, but again, still 10 days is still the length of quarantine. So sometimes when we get the results, it's already past the time that the person has been in quarantine. So the information that we get, the majority is from LabCorp, but we do obtain information from labs or testing that's done throughout the community.
Is that, is that voluntary? I mean, like, does Quest, for example, do they submit their test results? Or is it something that, I mean?
Yes, they, the test results are submitted from the laboratory to us, to VDH.
And are those the PCR tests? Or are they the antigen? Do you distinguish between the kind of tests that they are? Or is it just the results? It does, you're not distinguishing between one type of test versus the other?
We are, most of our test results are PCR. Now that the antigen testing is becoming more frequent, some of the information that we're getting does not specify if it's antigen or PCR. At that point, we specify if it is PCR or an antigen test. Sometimes that means contacting the laboratory directly. If we are notified through other means, someone calls and says or an employer or something like that, then we have to obtain that test result to see if it is PCR or antigen testing.
And then following that, I work at William &amp; Mary. And so I'm very involved with their whole testing protocol with a company called Calico through VCU Health Services. And I'm just wondering whether or not you, you know, because this is for all of these students that are coming in, 9,000 students coming into our community, and they're all getting tested by Calico, that system. And I'm just wondering, are those results also being funneled to you, to the Virginia Department of Health?
The test from Calico, I don't, I have to confirm that that is because I know that's-
I might elucidate. It's, coronavirus is a rapidly reportable disease statutorily in the state of Virginia. We will get all of the information. If there's a backlog, they'll send us the positives. And then the delay actually occurs in the negative tests. Now, to that explanation with regard to the PCR being the gold standard, we're solid on that answer. We're not so sure necessarily at this point with regard to antigen tests.
And that is an antigen test, right? So, okay, I was just curious, you know, for the community to know that there is this massive testing effort going on. I don't know. And like you said, it's a snapshot in time and it's literally a snapshot in time for, from the point that wherever they are in the United States, they're getting tested and then sending it in and then they travel eight days and who knows? So, but then there's, we have a whole nother system, which we might want to consider something like this, where they're cleared to come to campus, but then there's this ongoing app that they are supposed to be actually answering certain questions every single day that would be controlling this a little bit. So I just didn't, I didn't know. So thank you for that. And then my other question is, when you're meeting Dr. Heron with the, with the other superintendents and getting the reports, are you sensing that you're building some kind of consensus among all the superintendents in our area for, for what is the threshold of comfort for the different phases that the schools are?
We haven't actually met yet. I think our first meeting is going to be this Thursday or next Thursday.
I think it might be next Thursday because we just sent out the invitations today.
Literally today, this was just part of the, starting to really have a constant communication on a weekly basis, which we really, really appreciate you doing.
So do you think there's going to be kind of a meeting of the minds of the superintendents and coming to some kind of consensus on, or is this just really going to be a division-by-division independent? You know how we have the calendar committee and everything all falls to the-
Snow days.
To snow days and, no, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the calendar committee for what happens to York needs to happen at WJCC, needs to happen at Newport News. And is, are we getting, are we going to have that kind of coordination or not?
I think we'll not know until we know what data we're going to have every week and then we'll be able to go from there. So it's hard to say because we're just, we haven't met yet as a whole group. But I really appreciate the opportunity to get that firsthand information on a regular basis. And I know it's, it makes sense for us all to get it at the same time and respond to it and be in position to have a discussion.
Thank you.
Kelly?
My point with snow days is which superintendent's going to blank and close school first or close school last? They're going to come to a consensus, at least on the peninsula, if they do. So you said, you said that, and I do appreciate you being here and I know that it extends your workday and I do appreciate the information. You said that we were in, that we were in substantial transfer. What's the definition of that? Can you remind us again?
So transmission is defined by the, essentially the prevalence of a disease and how quickly that it's transmitted or how quickly it's spread throughout, throughout the disease. So VDH has different classifications of transmission, substantial, moderate, I believe, minimum. And so the entire eastern region has been at substantial transmission. So essentially, that means that, this is separate from the disease burden. So there's really three indicators. We're looking at trends, we look at disease burden, we look at transmission. Substantial transmission means that the disease is being- Substantial transmission means that the disease is being dispersed throughout the community. It's broadened throughout the community. It's not, you know, in, in concentrated little pockets. It's kind of spread throughout the community. Versus the burden which lends more to the actual prevalence of the disease. If you have just a large quantity per, we usually use per 100,000 people.
The three indicators are trends, disease burden, and what was the other one? I missed that.
Transmission.
Transmission.
Mm-hmm.
And it would seem to, it seemed to me that there's objective quality. I use OQI in my workday, but there's objective data that says when you're in which or what, which?
Yes.
Can you explain that a little bit? What that objective data is?
The, the one graph that you were looking at that is not yet publicly available, those gates or those elements have been set by the central office where all of the epidemiologists reside. And part of that is built around how they inform on a regional basis the governor's office with regard to his decision making. So those levels are established by the state epidemiologist.
And is that the chart that was gating criteria?
It's the one that says phase three.
Yes.
So it had the dots on it.
The gating criteria.
And so, so the concern I've always had with this is people have presented a lot of data, but they don't really give any guidance. So, you know, you have superintendents out there who are not health experts, and so, so at what point would we look at going back to schools on some level? When we're in minimal, when we're in moderate, when we're, what, what's, what's the, what's the criteria that we would, where we were as a community, a health community? What criteria would they, would they reach where they would say, okay, I think we need to start thinking about going back to school? Because they close us down quick, right? So they gave us plenty of, plenty of guidance on closing us down. At what point do they give us guidance about trying to think about getting back in the classroom? Is that, because, you know, you're, the, the problem we have is that we have a lot of non-health experts, right, non-health experts? And we're, we're tasked with making decisions on health, but I don't feel like we're getting a good guidance and recommendations from the health community. So at what point do we, do we look for that guidance that says, okay, it's, you'd think, we're, think we're good? When we're at minimal, when we're at?
We don't have, we have not been given a specific number, like a specific threshold that says, once you get below this number, go back and, you know, as you were. We don't have that at this point. The guidance that we are given, and the, the guidance that we give out to the community, the information that, that we are given comes from, primarily from the epidemiologists who are studying this at the micro and macro level. We're also looking at the response, the, the response to transition, moving from one phase to the next, and looking at disease patterns. That information will tell the epidemiologists and give us a greater sense of what is safe, defining what is safe for certain circumstances, certain situations. So I wish that I could say, okay, you know, once we reach this number, this threshold, then, you know, everything will be fine and, and you can go back to normal. But we do know that when reopening happens, as it happens, COVID is still going to be present. Prevention and measures still need to be in place. How disease and infectious rates will respond to a change in migration, a change in behavior patterns is harder for us to predict. And unfortunately, it's frustrating when you're, you're trying to seek answers and get some definitive response. But as health professionals, we don't, we want to give you things to consider, but we also don't want to give this false sense of security that, okay, if you reach a number, then everything will, you know.
Right, right.
Will be fine. So we're, we're not at that place yet where we can give an actual definition. So that's why having these types of, of meetings and there are a lot of systems and school systems that are trying different things to see what will work. Every community, every system is different. So it's not a, an actual cookie cutter type of response, unfortunately.
Yeah, and, you know, we get a lot of guidance from other non-health experts who are saying, oh, you should be in school or you shouldn't be in school, you know? And, and so it's a lot of frustration on us is, and people in like us in other position, in other communities trying to make these decisions when, when we get a little, I feel like we get a lot from the health experts of, good luck, try something and see the works. And, and I just think that's, that's frustrating on our, from, from us is, you know, trying to be decision makers and, and community leaders to, this is what we should do. I mean, I'm, I, I fully support where we are now as far as virtual learning for committing to the first nine weeks. But at some point, you know, the trends numbers are going down, and at some point, we got to think about opening back up on some level. And I'd like to, like to, like to have at least some guidance from the health professionals on how we do that. And so that's, that's, that's just a frustration that, that I think a lot of us have and a lot of community members have is that, you know, the decision to close was instantaneous. And then, and from the beginning, I was like, okay, what's our criteria for opening back up again? And we're really, don't have that. It's really kind of on the fly. And, and we're going to let some school systems go back and let some schools go back and see how that works. And then it's just, that's, I'll quit venting, but that's my, that's my, that's my frustration.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, I share some of that frustration as you, Heather, but I very much appreciate all the work that you guys do. I mean, you're, you're, oh, sorry, you're, you're the ones really out there trying to figure out how to deal with this and, and getting the data. And I appreciate that. I, I, I think part of my frustration is I totally support the non-pharmaceutical interventions, absolutely, all of them. And if we encourage our school community to follow that and they, and they're really diligent about that, it can come to not because we have people walking around out in our community who think it's bogus or it's a waste of time or whatever it is. And that, and that really is frustrating. And, and, you know, I, Fausi hasn't said it, but it's like, if we could shut everything down for three weeks, nobody goes out and sees it, you know, if nobody is out there, where's the virus going to go? And it's just, that's why this seems to just, it just lingers on and on and on because we're, we're, everything's voluntary. And it's like, we're in a serious health crisis right now, and, and maybe everything isn't voluntary. And maybe we ought to be a little tougher because it, it will benefit older Americans, and certainly it's going to benefit the kids as well. And I, but please do not misunderstand my frustration. I'm not frustrated with you at all. I, you're, you're like the first offense, and I go to the site and, and I'm informed, and I very much appreciate that, both of you.
Thank you. Mr. Dow?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for your times. Just reiterate that I really appreciate you being here and, and sharing your expertise with us. Many of my questions have been asked and have been re-asked, and I feel like you've done a really great job in explaining it at, at the basis level. Can you share though, on page 11, I'm looking at the gating criteria, what actually does constitute an outbreak?
So an outbreak is defined by two or more infections, two or more positive infections in a given setting not involving household contacts. So essentially you have two positive, two or more positive cases of, two individuals that are not related or connected to each other, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you. Yeah. When, when all this began back in March, you know, it was kind of crammed down my throat and everybody else's. We got a flattened curve, right? And, and I feel like, well, maybe we did that pretty well, but maybe you can share with us what our response to that initiative, what, to that strategy was for our hospitals locally and what James City County, Williamsburg hospitals look like as far as bed capacity and, and availability of, of staff to, to manage another outbreak or, or a series of outbreaks.
So without speaking specifically to each health system, because I, I don't want to misspeak on that, but in general, the hospitals in, you know, James City County within the district are able to meet capacity for an increase in cases. An outbreak, it varies, it fluctuates. You can have an outbreak of five, you can out, have an outbreak of 50, you can have an outbreak of 500. So do they have the capacity for an outbreak of 500 or 5,000? That is, is less certain. So when, when we're giving guidance and, and we are anticipating, especially if we're looking at reopening, we look at where we're reopening, we're looking at potential, the, the hospitalization rates as it stands now is a little under 5% for the peninsula. So the prevalence or, or disease rate is not quite at, at 10%. So if we look at the, the percentages of, okay, if it's had maybe 10% or 6% prevalence in the community of, let's say, six, 100,000, if you, let's say you're dealing with, looking at, let's say reopening someplace that has 10,000 people, then when you do the math, you look at, okay, this community, there's a potential for an outbreak of, let's say, up to 6,000. So does the health system have that, you know, capacity for that? Do we have those resources in place? We don't really have those resources in place yet. So what is it going to take to have those resources in place? It's going to take making sure that we have adequate PPE, not just a set number of PPE, but we also have access to ongoing PPE if it is needed. We need to make sure that we have adequate testing with turnaround, rapid turnaround that is PCR testing, not so much antigen, because even with an antigen test, the positivity, the, the false negativity rate is still relatively high. So if you have someone who's symptomatic and they have an antigen test that's negative, still need to follow it up with a PCR because they could still be positive, depending on what, at what phase during the infection cycle that they actually had the antigen test. So there are some nuances that, again, that can improve with the testing. But as it stands now, there, there aren't enough things in place in anticipation of that potential outbreak. So.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done, I apologize. When, when James City County and Williamsburg were at their worst back in March, I, I believe, I don't think we exceeded that, that response in March. Did we exceed our hospitals, did they exceed their capacity to care for COVID patients? And whether we did or we didn't, how quickly did that rebound for us locally? Can, can either one of you?
Dr. Domenino wasn't here at the time, but what I will say is that here on the Peninsula, we have what's called the Peninsula COVID Operations Center. It's composed of representatives from all six localities. That includes the CAOs, that includes EMS chiefs, police, and so on and so forth. All health systems were reporting on a weekly basis, and we still have our phone call every Wednesday afternoon, and that includes a report out of, what's my bed capacity? How many patients do I have? How many patients am I tracking that are in the community? So we have a good sense of that. One of the first things that happened with the close down orders was that the governor released the ability of counting licensed beds. So that gave us some immediate surge capacity of about 15% on the peninsula. So although we're here and we've got Williamsburg Regional, the answer is, some of those patients end up at Riverside or at Careplex or at Norfolk General. So it's a health system thing. When we talk about capacity, it's, it's built around total beds on the peninsula. All of those hospitals are shared regardless.
Thank you. Thank you. One final question for me. I, I was fortunate enough to finally get to the library with my, my boy yesterday, and I was surprised, pleasantly surprised that I was greeted by an individual that was screening. Community members, as we came in, asked me to step on an X. I stood in front of a computer and I was confused. And this thing was going to check my temperature. So from your perspective, is screening for temperature, is that an adequate, I guess, estimation of a, of a individual's likelihood that they're carrying COVID?
Checking the temperature is similar to test, to any testing, it's just a snapshot of, of if someone, you know, has the potential for some kind of infection. Temperature, an elevated temperature is not a direct correlation to COVID. But if you have an elevated temperature, then that can prompt additional questioning that can assess if there's a risk factor for COVID infection. So there is a role for temperature checks if it is used as part of the screening, not the specific and sole screening tool.
So if, if I were to have had COVID yesterday, my son, and we stepped on that X, the machine took our temperature, if we had COVID, we would have registered a temperature, a fever or no?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Not necessarily.
Thank you. Yeah. I wrote not a direct correlation, but I just wanted to hear that in layman's terms.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you for your, your time. I appreciate you both.
Are there any additional questions?
I just have, Ms. Hummel? I just have one more question. This is like moving forward in the future. We've got a vaccine, but is this looking like it's going to be a flu vaccine sort of thing where it's going to, COVID is going to be morphing and, and changing, and we're going to have a new vaccine every year and it's going to be, so we're going to have, I'm envisioning everyone's going to have to have flu shots and COVID shots for the near future. Is that, and is that something that the Peninsula Health Department will be giving direction to the school systems or is that, this, you know, as far as like what immunizations will be required before students can come to school?
Well, when it comes to the immunization, what I'm hearing from your question is twofold. So the, the first part is in relation to foreseeing a COVID vaccine having different versions or different variations similar to the flu vaccine. Since we have identified COVID, the nature of the virus has been relatively stable. So the idea is that that vaccine should, should be sufficient, but not, not having real understanding of the virus for more, not even 12 months, that still isn't an indicator that it could change and that it could evolve. So there's a potential that it could be like a flu virus, there's potential that it could be like the, you know, pneumococcal virus. So, you know, so there are tests that being, and research that's being done, looking at antibody testing and things like that, that will give us more information about what kind of vaccine is going to be effective and if there needs to be booster shots or, or what the pattern is going to be. So that lends to the first part of your, your question. The second part, as far as guidance for, for vaccinations, that's a clinical assessment. So if that does happen, then yes, as the health department, we would advise, you know, the school system and, and advise them accordingly.
Thank you for coming. Thank you both for coming. I really appreciate it.
Any additional questions? Ms. Young, Ms., no.
Just thank them for us.
Yes, I would just like to thank you too for helping the board and the, and the community better understand the complexity of, of. understand the complexity of understanding the data, and even though it's, we're not getting clear guidance as to when we can go back to school and when, you know, when we move from substantial to something lower, it just, I think illustrates how complex it really is, and there's multiple pieces, it's like a big puzzle that we have to put together to make decisions. So thank you both.
Very much.
Dr. Heron?
Yes, Ms. Ombi and Board, we're now moving on to the second part of our Return to Learn presentation, bringing staff in to join us this evening to take us through various updates on our getting ready for back to school. But thank you again for coming and for being our partner in this process. We're just doing a quick cleanup here, as always, and we will have staff presenting from both sides tonight for a quick flow to get some information to you. And Mr. Walker is going to be our emcee this evening and start the process.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. Tonight, we are pleased to share updates with you from several operational areas. Mr. Schnipes will have information about health and safety mitigation strategies and new tools that we are putting in place. Mr. Landers will update you on technology resources and our device distribution plan. Mr. Holland and Ms. Newcomb, the acting administrators for the WJCC Virtual Academy, will provide enrollment information and data related to the startup of the academy. And finally, Mrs. Cox will tell you about some of the parent resources being created to support remote student learning. In the interest of efficiency, we ask that you try to hold your questions as much as possible until the end of the presentation.
Does he feel the need to say that?
Thank you so much.
As you know, the health and wellness of our teachers, staff, and students is the most important consideration as we move forward with our Return to Learn plans. Cleaning for health is taking place in buildings, with touchpoints being disinfected multiple times a day. And when select students begin visiting schools for assessments and screenings or special education classes, buses will be cleaned after each run. Mr. Schnipes will share information about the tools being used in just a moment. The four priority areas of the WJCC Health Plan are here on the screen. Course number one, daily self-screening for health and staying home if you're ill. This is the greatest step we can take to reduce the potential spread. This takes place by staff, and parents will also ask to do the same screening for students prior to sending to school. Number two, the use of face coverings by students and staff. Number three, social distancing to the greatest extent possible in classrooms, common areas, and on school buses. And finally, frequent handwashing and the proper covering for a cough or sneeze. Even at the elementary level, we're actually building time into the schedule for handwashing breaks when students return to school. When staff and students return to our buildings, there will be signage throughout the hallways and classrooms to remind them of these important health and safety practices. These signs are examples from Berkeley Middle School. Every school will also have a number of plexiglass barriers that can be used when social distancing is limited. We have several of those in place here tonight. In total, 525 of these have been ordered. At schools, there's a barrier in the main office where people check in for assessments, screenings, and appointments. They will also be used when students are taking part in PALS, gifted, and special education assessments, participating in small group instruction, and during delivery of direct services such as speech-language therapy.
Plexiglass screens such as this one here in front of me are great when people must be in close proximity of one another. We're also putting measures in place to improve the air quality of classrooms and buildings that reduce the number of bacteria and particles in the air. We have a plan in place to upgrade HVAC systems with higher particulate filtration filters, the MERV 11-
Marcellus, I'm sorry, could you move closer to the mic?
Sure. The MERV 11 and 13 filters block particulates, including most bacteria, mold, and spores. In rooms where use of the new filters is not possible, we plan to use HEPA air purifiers. These standalone units help filter the air in classrooms. Across the division, we'll be using electrostatic disinfecting tools like this one here, which will provide an electrical charge to solutions that encompass and encompass the entire surface that we're spraying. It's more efficient, it's faster, it allows our custodians to move a lot quicker throughout the building.
And they're hard to find.
And they are very hard to find, yes. We got some early on.
Big old squirt gun.
Yes. And again, the electrostatic sprayers will be used to clean buses and classrooms. It will allow us, again, to disinfect large areas more efficiently by better coverage.
Pass that around?
I can, but-
No.
Demonstrating, demonstrating after the meeting this evening.
I volunteer Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Schnipes. Those tools and mitigation strategies will be used now that teachers and staff are returning to buildings two days a week, and they will continue to be in place as we move between paths of our Return to Learn Forward WJCC Schools Plan. As we begin the school year on Path One, Remote Learning, a one-to-one technology initiative is essential for student success. The initiative encompasses more than just devices. There are considerations for Internet connectivity and tech support as well. In fact, the VDOE Return to Learn Guidance notes the technology challenges divisions across Virginia are facing. The Recover, Redesign, Restart document states, "The use of technology by schools is complicated by the availability of Internet resources within a community and the access learners and staff have to those resources. School divisions are urged to bridge the digital divide among their stakeholders by working closely with local leaders." And that is exactly what Mr. Landers and his team are currently doing.
The Technology Department continues working toward the first day of school and prepping our networking devices for staff and students to continue teaching and learning. As you are aware, we have placed orders for tablets and laptops to ensure that every student has a device to use for their schoolwork. Including our existing inventory and what has been added, we are prepping tablets for every student in grades K through 2 and laptops for every student in grades 3 through 12. All tablets are currently in WJCC possession. Tablet preparation includes making sure that the required apps are preloaded so that the device is ready to use once we hand it to the student. We are still waiting on delivery of approximately 2,200 laptops, as we've had laptops confiscated by the Department of Commerce, and the manufacturer has been forced to identify additional inventories since the supply chain has been compromised due to COVID. We are currently expecting delivery toward the end of this month, and our services vendor is ready to turn these devices around to us within a matter of days. We have already started prepping the laptops that we have in our existing inventory. With this in mind, we will begin distribution of laptops to students that have signed up for the Family Choice the week of August 24th. The following week of August 31st, we will begin distribution for all levels. This will continue through the week of September 14th. With several options at each school at various times of the day, the schedule for distribution will be posted to our website and communicated to the community. Should a family miss all of our distribution scheduled days, individual appointments can be coordinated by their principal at the James Blair Annex Support and Repair Center. Ongoing support will be provided to staff and students through WJC's Tech Connect. Support may be requested by submitting a request through the Tech Connect portal or by a phone call. Technology staff will provide support primarily through phone calls and remote session support, and in those cases where needed, in-person appointments will be scheduled at the James Blair Annex Support and Repair Center. The scheduled appointments are required in order to maintain social distancing and disinfecting guidelines. We also continue to identify and expand network connection options. We have worked with community members, James City County staff, and our vendors to expand Internet access options. Keep in mind that our tablets and laptops are configured so that students are tunnelled back through our firewall to meet SIPA filtering requirements, no matter what Internet connection they may use. Options for our families include Cox's Connect to Compete program, which allows families that may be financially challenged to receive services at a greatly reduced rate. In addition, Cox's waive connection fees so that the family is only charged a small monthly service fee. Additionally, James City County has offered to pay for infrastructure installation where families may live a distance from existing Cox lines in order to facilitate the connection. Our Family Outreach Coordinator is also reaching out to various community organizations to identify locations where we might place a high-connection capable mobile hotspot. These devices will allow over 100 connections at a time, and we're looking at community centers, hotels, and other areas where they may be beneficial. For families that make use of services at the James River Community Center, the James City County Recreation Center, WISC, and Rec Connect, these locations have Wi-Fi service. We will also expand our Wireless on Wheels option, and our partners with the Williamsburg Regional Library will also continue their mobile hotspot service. Schedules will be posted to the website and provided as a handout with our devices. We are also installing external access points at each of our school buildings that will cover two parking lots at each location. Additionally, we do have a limited number of MiFi hotspot units that will be available to students with no other options. These devices can be requested for individual checkout through the student school staff. We have also requested another 400 of these units through the VDOE grant, taking advantage of the reduced pricing offered through the Verizon Education Agreement with Georgia VDOE, and we are waiting on the final grant decision.
Nowhere is technology more important than for students enrolled in the WJCC Schools Virtual Academy, a Family Choice for online learning. I am Scott Holland, one of the acting administrators for the Virtual Academy. I'm joined by my colleague, Michelle Newcomb, to give you a brief overview of our enrollment and plans. As you know, selecting the WJC Schools Virtual Academy is a commitment for the student to complete at least one semester online, regardless of what path the school division is currently on. The Virtual Academy courses will be 100% online, taught by WJCC Schools teachers, and will include live instruction and independent assignments and activities appropriate for each grade level. There are 2,975 students enrolled for the current school year, representing every grade level and coming to us from every school in the division. Here is a breakdown of enrollment by elementary, middle, and high school. For comparison, at the elementary level, you are looking at approximately the same number of students as two of the larger brick-and-mortar elementary schools put together. At the secondary level, enrollment is greater than our biggest middle school and about the same size as a small high school. The Virtual Academy includes 406 students who will receive special education services. That is approximately 14% of our students. You see the breakdown by level on the screen. English language learners are part of the Virtual Academy, with 92 elementary English learner students enrolled and 97 secondary English learners signed up. That equates to 6.6% of the Virtual Academy population. We are working diligently to ensure these students, as well as the students in need of special education services, receive the instruction and support they need in a virtual learning environment.
Approximately 175 teachers and staff members have been identified to work as part of the WJCC Schools Virtual Academy this school year. Some staff members volunteered, others have been accommodated based on need, and there were some who were reassigned based on the number of teachers needed for a specific grade level or course. Elementary students will participate in online and offline activities daily that will require a range of 3 and 1/2 to 4 hours of instructional experiences based on grade level. Continuous screen time will not exceed educational guidelines based on the age of the student. Secondary students will take part in daily online learning that mirrors the block schedule used in WJCC middle and high schools. Students will submit all assignments via Canvas or Student View as required by the teacher. Printed materials will not be accepted. Student View will continue to be the gradebook of record and will serve as the system of record documenting student progress. Special education services and individualized education programs and 504 plans will be coordinated with families and may include remote instruction and/or teletherapies. Students who participate in year-long virtual learning can take part in extracurricular activities. Students in the Virtual Academy will be enrolled concurrently at their zone schools. They will continue to receive counseling services and elementary centers' instruction from their home school. They will also be eligible to take part in activities and athletics at their zone school. Parents who join PTA will be part of their home school unit, and we are strongly encouraging families to join the PTA because those home school connections are more important than ever. Mrs. Cox is here now with more information about parent resources.
Thank you, Michelle and Scott. WJCC Schools prides itself on building positive, supportive connections between our students, families, and schools. In fact, just last week, the Virginia PTA recognized Dr. Heron as a superintendent power partner. We understand that beginning the new school year with remote learning will require teachers and staff to be more creative in the ways they cultivate relationships and share resources with families. The Communications and Engagement Team is developing a toolkit of sorts for families. We're partnering with various departments and schools across the division for Parent Academy webinars and videos, including how to use Canvas, Parent View, and Student View. We will continue to offer the award-winning SHIP videos that Dr. Heron shared at the last board meeting that offer tips for brain breaks and integrating physical movement into the remote learning day. We're putting together the Family Guide to Remote Learning with tips for setting up a workspace, managing time, and creating routines. We'll have links to academic resources and community supports, including childcare options, virtual field trips, meal programs, and more. We will also post teacher tips similar to the kindergarten videos you saw earlier to explain clearly to parents what students are doing in a remote learning environment. The toolkit will also feature digital resources such as Internet connectivity resources and Internet safety. We will share best practices for Zoom and Microsoft Team meetings, and again, there will be links to community resources that are available to families. The toolbox will continue to grow as the year goes on and we move to other paths within our Forward WJCC Schools Plan. But we have to start somewhere, so we're beginning our new Parent Academy virtual series with a live webinar focusing on Canvas for parents. It will help parents understand how to support their middle and high school children in the use of this new learning platform. The session is scheduled for next Wednesday, August 26th. So far, more than 1,100 parents signed up, and actually, right before I came in here, I received an update. And as of 6:30 this afternoon, there were actually 1,255 registrants. We know that 6:00 PM might not work for everyone's schedule, so the session will also be recorded and posted as part of the online toolkit. Families will also want to mark their calendars for the next Parent Academy session that features Tools for Success in a Digital Classroom. That is scheduled for September 30th at 6:00 PM. Details will be posted soon on wjccschools.org. Madam Chair, that concludes our report for this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions? And Mr. Dow?
Go first?
Please, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a question about the Virtual Academy, 14% special ed and 6.6 English language learners? That's consistent with our general population, is that right?
That almost mirrors our population, so we have the same mix of students in our Virtual Academy as we have in our regular school for next year.
That's interesting. That's interesting. Okay, and then I have a question about the 4,400 laptops and tablets that were ordered. That's in addition to what we already have, correct? So that gets us completely to 1 to 1.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Those were in addition to what we already have.
Okay. And then I just wanted to confirm that students would be expected to use the issued laptop or tablet as opposed to their own device, is that correct?
That's correct as well, primarily due to licensing restrictions. We're not able to offer our software to WJCC devices. So to ensure they have all the resources they need, we prefer they use the laptop we assign to them, in addition to SIPA filtering requirements.
Thank you. And then I don't, I'm not, this isn't a question, it's a request about staying home when ill. If we could just be really clear about that, because today, or before March, the guidance was, you know, fever-free without medication for 24 hours, no vomiting, diarrhea for 24 hours, but you didn't go to school if you had, I mean, you could go to school if you had a cold, right, with no fever. And so if that's going to change, I think, for public health purposes, I think we need to be really clear about that, and then update that and communicate it. I just wanted to, based on some phone calls from public comment, I just wanted, could you reiterate for the public that with regard to the paths, that the differences between the little ones, that K-12 is not being treated the same as the paths change, that the littler ones are going to school earlier than the older kids? Could you talk about that a little bit, please, Dr. Heron?
Right, Path 1 is mostly remote. To communicate something as big as that, we call Path 1 all-remote, but in actual fact, we're moving very quickly to offer some services to our most needy students. In Path 2, we have, we're serving our most needy students again, and K through 3. And then Path 3, we're serving all of our students with half of the students coming at once, 2 days a week, to keep social distancing in place.
Thank you.
And even at Path 2, it's 2 days a week for social distancing again, but it'll be K through 3 when we move to Path 2, which is a huge move.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the public understood that not all grades are being treated equally. The older ones are presumably more likely to be able to handle online, and will be asked to do that a little bit longer than the younger students. And then the last question has to do with also a comment made from a citizen who called in. Right now, or at least when I last looked a couple days ago, the virtual schedule is a draft schedule, it's a sample schedule. Do you know when the division will be finalizing the schedules at all levels for virtual learning so families can plan?
So actually, today, we posted more detailed schedules. They're still listed as sample schedules because specifically at middle and high school, it may change based on your courses that you've selected, but they are more detailed for the elementary school students as of today online.
But they're still samples?
They're all samples, just because any day, there might be a change in a schedule. Our goal is to follow those outlines that are provided as samples, but there might be something that a teacher discovers with her class or his class that they need to make a slight adjustment to accommodate the majority of the students.
If I'm a family trying to plan childcare, for instance, I, for an elementary school-aged child, I can look online and with a fair amount of
Yes, ma'am.
confidence, go with that. Okay, thank you, that's all, Madam Chair. Thank you. Mr. Dow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, community partnerships are going to be really critical in these first several weeks that, you know, we're doing mostly virtual learning. I was going to share this with Dr. Heron offline, but in my day job, I'm the executive administrator of a local Baptist church, and what we're going to be doing is standing up a wireless study hall essentially. And so I'd be interested in knowing how, you know, off-channel, how we can, you know, publicize that for the community, those that are most needy in this, well, in the Stonehouse region that's going to be really adversely affected by that. But apart from that, the MiFi hotspots, I'm curious what the cost is for those, and is there an associated monthly fee? Because it sounds like you're needing more, and maybe that's another community partnership that we could implore from, you know, anybody that's listening and watching.
Landers has all of the details.
Yes, sir. The basic MiFi hotspot that we would be assigning to an individual, actually just received in the last 2 weeks greatly reduced pricing on those units. Previously, they were anywhere from $60 to $100 to purchase the device, and then $40 to $45 a month for the service. That has been reduced, that the cost of purchase now ranges from 40 to 60, depending on the device you get. And the monthly service has been cut to $1,850 a month.
How long would that last, that break?
That's good for the life of the Georgia VDOE contract. I would hope that they've put that in place for multiple years, but I can get the exact length of that for you.
So you're looking for how many MiFi hotspots, and your budget would satisfy that $18 a month for that number of hotspots?
We currently have, we have on hand 90 devices. We have ordered another 50 through our operating budget. Have requested through the Virginia DOE grant funding for another 400 units.
And how are they used, very specifically, I guess?
Well, they're used, are they used by the student?
Yeah, so they're handed out to an individual student or family?
Yes, there's a process in place where the student or the parent would request it through their building principal administration. That principal would then basically enter a tech connect ticket, and we would assign the device to that student.
Is that until we move into a new path, or for the duration of the school year?
Well, depending on the student, whether they're on Family Choice, it would be for the year. If we were on a path, when they come back to the building, then we, when they're back in the building full-time, not necessarily Path 3, they would be part of the time in building, part of the time out, back in the building.
So then we would own these, we're not renting them, is that right?
We're not renting them, no.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Dow, if I could follow up with the partnership piece. Dr. Highland is reaching out and has reached out to many organizations across the community for a similar tutoring-type situation if needed, and so we'll ask her to reach out to you tomorrow.
That'd be great, yeah, thank you. I'm curious about assessments, that had been a topic of conversation in the last several meetings. Clearly, we know that there's going to be a great number of students that are tracking below their, you know, their needed educational level, and then how we assess, you know, what kind of, you know, makeup is needed for those students. I was curious, from what I gathered today, is that assessment, one, I guess, when are we going to begin those assessments, and two, is it inclusive of students that are not within the ELL demographic or the special-edged needs demographic?
Absolutely. I'm going to get Mr. Walker to speak to the assessments that we're going to be giving and the timeline for those as well.
Thank you. Start with the state-required assessments, the PALS assessment, that's for all students, kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. It's required in-person this year, one-to-one. That will begin September 14 at each of the nine elementary schools. We'll have a team that will deal with the testing on that. There are additional tests that are required by the state for kindergarten readiness, the VKRP, that will also begin strategically, that's September 14. We're estimating that it will take approximately 3 and 1/2 to 4 weeks for each elementary school to assess those kindergarten students, as well as those first and second-grade students.
And so maybe I'm, am I hearing that it's just for elementary, nothing for secondary? If there is a concerned parent that says, you know, like, my son or my daughter had a really tough time at the end of the last school year, really concerned that we're starting in 9 weeks of virtual, I don't know how to help them, and these are the things that I do hear, I think we all hear in this room. Is there any assessment that's available for, you know, for cases like that?
I will say, at the secondary level, I'm not aware of a general assessment that just would assess if you're behind or not. Now, if we're speaking of you feel that your child may have a disability, then that starts immediately a process that the school has to respond to within X amount of days with that. Dr. Beers?
Also, within teaching, each teacher will assess the level of ability and level of knowledge as a student as they start the year. That's a fairly regular thing, and then there's ongoing formative assessments and major unit assessments throughout the year. So I think it'll become very obvious to the teachers involved if a student is behind when they start. And also, I know we've built into the beginning of the year a certain amount of remediation of last year's content to front-load the beginning of the year with missed content from before.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's, there's two different ways. We're going to try to address those potential gaps that are there.
Excellent, thank you.
I think maybe Dr. Beers had an add-on question.
Yeah, I have a question about the progress reports that they made last, you know, in the spring, you know, as a sort of a summary. Did they do that? And I'm assuming if they did, that the teachers that have those kids this fall will have access to that information. Because I really, I really agree, it's really important, I mean, and I know it's important with the younger kids, but with the older students, it's really important to try to get a handle on where they are as quickly as you can when they, you know, when they start up against the fall. And I'm thinking that should have useful information for the teachers in the fall.
That's correct. I believe the report cards were more formatted for comments from teachers, I believe.
For the elementary students, that's correct.
Which is why we're putting the emphasis on the early grades going through PALS assessment and other assessments to assess their level of need right now. And at the secondary level, it was end, of course, assessments to see if they'd gained the knowledge to pass the course or not.
Right, right. And at the end of a course in high school, do, all right, I guess, they just get a grade at the end of the semester, but there aren't a lot of comments, are there? I mean, because that's just not part of the, which is sort of too bad, that you don't have access to that kind of information as well. But maybe the teachers, you know, can find out who had what and, you know, get that, you know, sort of anecdotal information, which I think is just as important as the letter B or C or, you know, whatever it might be. Okay, thanks.
Dr. Beers, Mr. Dow.
Yeah, thank you. Seeing the 2020 Parent Academy Canvas, that was really exciting to me. I've shared, and many of the colleagues here have shared, that how do we support our parents as they're trying to support their students? And interestingly enough, I was in Harrisonburg this last weekend, and I had an opportunity to hear superintendent and a school board member, and they were talking about one strategy that they're doing on that front is actually holding what, I guess, what they call parent professional development, similar to what they offer for their teachers. I don't know if they're doing it 2 days in like you'll be doing, Dr. Heron, 2 days in in the week, but it mirrors that teacher-parent professional development for parents. So I was really excited about this, to see this come out, too. I'm curious, is this, I didn't quite get this part of it, is it just for those that had opted into Family Choice, or is it for every parent? It seems like it's
This is for all parents, especially, for example, the first one on Canvas, whether in Virtual Academy or learning remotely, we're using the same platform. So a lot of the sessions will be for all parents, and there's a lot of knowledge to be gained by attending those.
Is it a one-time shop, a one-time stop, or will it be continued throughout the year?
It's something we've done on a regular basis, but I can see it taking on a new life this year because of the needs of parents. And as Ms. Cox shared earlier, we don't only just do the session, it will then be taped and put in the parent toolbox, so those who miss it can then go and access the information after the training.
Will there be, I kind of imagine that there would be updated kind of tools and strategies that are offered to parents throughout the year, and maybe you drop those in that toolbox when they get comfortable with using it?
Absolutely, and I know Ms. Cox may speak to that, but that's a whole area under huge development right now because we know there's a need to connect strongly with parents and keep that going throughout the year and give them all of the support they need. Just like last year, we had that constant communication with parents through the parent newsletter, and if I could mention the little nomination that I had from the PTA, really, it's the communications team that have earned that because they spent every week of last semester communicating with parents and keeping them informed. And what we're about to do now just speaks of their strength as well.
Thank you.
Young?
Yes, I have some questions. First of all, Dr. Heron, the last time we met, we talked about substitutes. How is that process working out, or is it being worked out? And are we having people that are coming forth who are saying they're willing to substitute?
We've actually started some conversations, Ms. Young. I don't think we've got all of the answers yet, but we're working through, we've had several discussions of how that's going to work and how we bring a substitute into the building. We do have one or two subs starting in classrooms where teachers are out. I believe that we don't have our process clearly defined, but that's one of our work sessions next week, one of the many.
Okay, some of my questions were answered already about like MiFi, but, Mr. Landers, I am interested in what happened to the 2,000 computers that we lost. What was, I'm not sure I understand what that was about.
You're referring to the ones that were confiscated?
Yes.
That wasn't quite the whole 2,000, but it was a number of them. I was actually hoping somebody would ask the question.
No, me too.
So there was one small part that were in the laptops developed by a firm in China that was on the "do not import from" list. They were placed on the list the day after our devices hit one of the ports in the U.S. So the very next day, the Department of Commerce started going through all the shipments received, found these devices that had the one small microcomponent in them, and they confiscated them, so they went away. So our manufacturer was required at that point to go find additional inventory to make up for that.
Okay, but actually, I mean, I somehow thought this was connected, this process was connected with COVID, is that what you had stated, or is my mind so full of COVID?
Well, the supply chain in general, overall, worldwide, has been compromised due to COVID because a number of the manufacturing plants had to shut down for months. So all of those inventories, they would normally build up over a 2-, 3-month period, they weren't making anything. So the entire supply chain has been compromised worldwide.
But you feel comfortable with the ones that we're going to receive, that they won't be confiscated?
We actually made sure they identified inventories that were already in the U.S., and we have 2 shipping confirmations so far, we're waiting on the third.
Okay, well, kudos to your department for getting them ready for kids to use. That's going to be a huge job, and I appreciate, I know how hard you guys work, so.
Thank you. Our technical services team has been burning up the phone line with our manufacturer.
You recall in the spring, in fact, in June, the day after the board approved the CARES Act funding from the county, these were ordered the next day. Literally, it was ready to press the button because we knew there would be a supply chain impact. We will be very fortunate to get as many as we can to start school on the first day. We may be behind in a few, but we have a back plan to get work started without some laptops if they don't arrive. I heard on a superintendent's call this week that some divisions will not receive their computers till November. So we were on the front line, some were ahead of us, some were behind, because we couldn't do anything until we had the funding, but we literally were on it, so thank you again, Mr. Landers, to you and your team. We'll just keep praying we get there.
Okay, and then can you explain, because one of the questions that we had this week is about the Virtual Academy, the difference between the Virtual Academy and remote learning, because I think there's some concern that, like, one teacher at the Virtual Academy is going to be teaching like 120 or, you know, a huge number of students, but that's not the impression I'm receiving.
No, I believe they're actually almost identical as we start the year because everyone in remote learning and everyone in the Virtual Academy has a teacher with a cap, a number of students that's capped by grade level, that I know Mr. Walker can speak to. speak to if I need him to. And they're using the same platform, they're getting, teachers are getting the same training. So the experience for all students going into the year is going to be very, very similar. But there should not be teachers teaching much more than teachers in the regular building. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And so the main, the main reason that, to me, from what my understanding, remote learning is, that students will be, from what you're saying, Mr. Walker, is that they will be in class, in a classroom group, and where there will be a role of students in that classroom? Is that, is that what I understood?
That's correct, yes.
So that, like, so that when we go to, back to school, hopefully soon, that these students will already know their teacher because they had that teacher during, during the virtual learning that we're initially starting with. Is that true?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay, good. Okay. And then the other thing, the only other question I had is, we're doing a lot of work. I mean, I know how hard Central Office and our teachers are working. My question is, are we cooperating or working in conjunction with any other school division to develop these programs and these, these, you know, the classwork that's going to be going on? Or are we doing it all ourselves?
There are some resources in Virtual Virginia for some unique courses that we're able to download some of that information that's free to all divisions in Virginia. But our teachers this summer, from what I understand, and Mr. Walker can elaborate, literally, we brought teachers in to rewrite and put together every single course at every single level. Mr. Walker, there was a huge number of teachers involved and worked together.
Just under 300 teachers over the summer have worked together with specialist, content coordinators, technology specialists, various supports from Gifted Special Education to collaborate and build digital curriculum. Quarter one is complete. Quarter two, the work is happening right now as we speak. The goal was, hopefully, by the start of the school year, quarter two would also be finished. But they've been working around the clock, many multiple hours.
And one of the strengths of that is if teachers are involved in developing curriculum that's uniquely ours by our teachers, there's huge buy-in to owning and delivering that curriculum. And so that's one of the many reasons why we end up with a lot of internal curriculum writing. But there are resources that we can certainly bring in from outside also.
Thank you so much. But if we could, it's too bad we can't afford, and I don't think we're going to be able to for quite a while, to at least take them out to lunch or something.
That would be nice.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I don't know that I have any real questions. I just have a couple of statements that I want to just reinforce from what some of my colleagues have talked about. Appreciate this information. I know how much hard this information, this is to put together. And, you know, they always say that 80% of the work takes 20% of the time, and the final 20% takes 80% of the time. And so we're, we're, we're deep into that. And as thirsty as we are for that information, our parents are just as thirsty for it, even more so because it's their kids. So the quicker we can put this in stone and get these out, get this out to our parents, as Mrs. Cook said, I think, I think that would be really good. So that our, you know, we heard, we heard the citizens comment tonight, too, about the, looking to nail down some plans, because, because, you know, this is all new for everybody. This is new for the parents. And there's a lot of, a lot of plans that parents have to do. It's just going to be, it's going to be very, it's going to be a very difficult September, for sure. Anyway, I appreciate, Mr. Landers, the information on the laptops and the efforts that we have gone to get laptops. The wireless stuff is really concerning me, because the laptop is fine, but kids not having access to, to the internet, whether it's the wireless on wheels and the MiFi's and, and all that. And I appreciate what Cox does. I appreciate what James City County is doing. You know, we just have to keep our pulse on that and be ready to react and, and help to, help to get these kids the tools and the resources they need for that. I will have to say, I was disappointed that Mr. Snipes didn't use that thing on his desk when he got up. I, I'm, I'm all about that. Also, you know, as, as this virtual academy is, is going to be a huge thing. And I just want to thank Mr. Hollins, Miss Newcomb, for stepping up and taking the leadership on this. I appreciate the, the work that you're going to be doing and the challenges that you're going to have on this. And, and I'm glad you had this opportunity. I'm really, I'm very good, good with that. You know, the, I don't know so much with the, with the virtual academy, with the teachers there, but, you know, other teachers, to hold them accountable, to making sure that they're delivering what they, the learning to the students that, that our students deserve is, is really a key part of the, key part of that. So I wish you all the best for that. And I know you, I know you can meet those challenges. And I'm, I'm really also very excited about our 1,200 registrants for our Parent, Parent Academy. I think that's going to be, that's, that's really exciting. I hope we can handle it. But, but I think that's, I think that's very good. So I thank you for the information. I thank for the work that the staff has put in to this date and at this point. And I know that there's a lot more to go. So I just want to thank everybody for that.
I just, I really appreciated Mrs. Young's question about where the content is coming from and are we partnering. And I agree with Dr. Heron that when it's created in-house, it's, develops buy-in. And, but also, it's, it's, I just trust the quality here. We're only, I mean, I mean no disrespect to any other school division. They're all wonderful. But we're, you know, fully accredited for 13 years in a row. And so I think that speaks to the quality of the teachers here. And so I have the fullest confidence that they're going to develop the best, the best stuff for our kids. So I'm really glad about that. So thank you.
I just wanted to say thanks to everyone. And thanks for bringing in the Virginia Department of Health people. I think that, I think all of us, like, Mr. Kelly said, we are not health experts, neither is our community. And the more information we can get from the experts and share it and all be on the same page with a basic amount of knowledge is, is really helpful. And then, once again, congratulations to our, our two new, new leaders of this. To think that you're standing up the equivalent of two elementary schools and a high school and a middle school both, and it's, it's really a huge task. So, and we've got the right people on the job. So thank you.
Ms. Hummel, I just had two questions. One is kind of a process question, harkening back to Ms. Young's questions about the virtual learning and the family choice. So for families who decide after a semester that they really, they would, they would like to do what the division is doing and no longer continue with the family choice, will those students be at the same spot with regard to curriculum? And, and will then they then be folded into a new classroom?
So the pacing and the curriculum has been aligned so that that can happen fairly easily. It may not, it won't be perfect, but, and then the student's schedules have also been aligned so that that will aid in that transition piece back if they choose.
And then the second piece, maybe Dr. Heron was going to answer.
If there's a, a huge transition of students back into the regular path, whatever that is at that point in time, we will be going through another huge logistical challenge with staffing. And we couldn't guarantee that the students would keep the same teacher. We would be looking for space and moving everybody around again. And that's what we've promised to do to give that option. But our biggest challenge has literally been to get the staffing place to honor the choice that families have made. And we're going to make it happen. And honestly, it, it sets us ready to keep that going while we can move along the paths. Many other divisions have just said, okay, we're going back virtual, so we're not doing a virtual academy. But if we, we're setting it in place so the virtual folks can still have that option, that choice that families have taken to stay virtual, so that we can start to move along the paths when the time is right and the data shows us to do. So we've kept our doors open and really, really gone through an incredible exercise to try to get there. And we've, staff have worked night and day. I can't thank all of them enough for the work that they're doing every day.
Thank you. And then one last question. I did have a chance to take a look at the, one of the, the new sample schedules, like, for the elementary level today. And so is the expectation that students would go to school from nine until four, Monday through Friday? It's like...
No, that's, that's not correct. They will begin at nine with a morning class meeting with their teacher synchronously. And then it'll move into a whole group lesson activity. And then there's a large chunk there in the middle of the day, I believe, from about 10:30 to 1 o'clock, that is built for small group instruction. And we realize the power in small group instruction for literacy and for numeracy, for that to happen, as well as interventionists and support folks to offer what we would refer to as the double dipping, additional supports, and to respond in the moment to address any loss of learning, remediation, enrichment that's needed in those two core areas of language and mathematics. At that point, a student would receive that small group instruction, but then they would have independent activities and assignments that they would be working on that would have been assigned to them by the classroom teacher. Throughout the afternoon, have the opportunity to come back for a closing activity, to come back together. We're really focused on that social emotional piece, especially with our youngest students, to start the day together, to try to end the day together. We do realize, though, that there are times when families and students aren't going to be able to log on live like that. Those lessons will be recorded and uploaded to the teacher's LMS page for students and families to access when they have the opportunity.
LMS? LMS?
LMS, yes. Learning management system, I'm sorry.
So as you can see, it mirrors the traditional day as much as possible. We're, this is not emergency school like the spring. We are, we're actually starting a new year, and we're going to start it well. And it's real school, and we're excited about it, because we know we have the teachers to make it happen.
Mr. Dowell?
Yeah, just one last question. What do we do with attendance?
Attendance will be recorded daily. That will, there will be flexibility with that as per the VDOE guidelines. And we'll look at that, whether the student is present for a synchronous lesson, or if they have engaged with some type of learning activity throughout that day, that will count for attendance.
Thank you.
I guess just following up on that. So the expectation, then, particularly for our younger students, is that an adult in the home will be present to help them go through this?
I think it's essential for the, for adult support to begin with, to establish that routine, that schedule, to remain connected with the school and the teacher. But as teachers do every year, with building routines and schedules, we want the students to, to own that. And I believe after time, just like in regular school, that will happen.
Thank you. Are there additional questions for staff? Thanks for all the work to all of our staff. And thanks to, to Mr. Hollins and to
Thank you.
Ms. Newcomb. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item 8.2, we have a presentation by Mosley Architects about facility space. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce Mr. Snipes, who's going to introduce our guests this evening. And I want to thank them for their patience, as they've sat through most of the evening and got a chance to listen to our board meeting and all of the fun things that are happening here. So thank you for your patience and waiting for the opportunity to speak this evening. So Mr. Snipes is going to introduce our guests, and then we're going to give you a quick presentation on space needs assessment. Mr. Snipes?
Thank you. Again, good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. And to not to extend the meeting any longer, but I wanted you to know and be aware that we did lose a member of the WJCC family over the last couple of weeks. We lost a custodian at Hornsby Middle School, and we recently lost a custodian at Matthew Whaley to a fire. And they are working on that. In addition, the other bus aide who is part of the WJCC family is currently in the hospital. And we want to keep her in our prayers. And tonight, there's, we are welcoming the James City County Civil Engineer, Sean Gordon, as well as Grace Boone, who is the Director of General Services, along with some members of Mosley Architects. And they're here tonight because the James City County Board of Supervisors and the Superintendent authorized the preparation of a facility space needs analysis to determine the amount of space that WJCC Central Office and operations would need over the next 20 years. The primary factors driving the need for that study was the additional administration space that we're, we're expecting because of student growth population, as well as the number of employees needed to support the school system. And again, tonight, Mr. Gordon is here, and Mr. Tony Bell, as well as Adam Bricker.
Thank you, Marcellus. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. We, the county selected Mosley Architects through the annual services contract that we had. So we prepared their services under that. They were selected due to their extensive space needs experience with local government and public schools in Virginia. Before we start the presentation, I wanted to give a, a thank you to you, Dr. Heron, and your senior leadership team for, for participating and providing all the valuable feedback that you did. It was greatly appreciated, and it was, it was vital for the validity of this assessment. And I also wanted to give a special thank you to Laura Robinson and Marcella Snipes for all the, the behind the scenes coordination and details that they helped us with. So before we start the presentation, I wanted to also kind of throw a couple background points out. And then I'll turn it over to, to Tony Bell with Mosley. Space needs assessment was identified by the Board of Supervisors and the strategic plan. It was an operational initiative goal. The last county assessment was completed in 1999, but it excluded the Williamsburg-James City County schools. The school board and Central Office completed an assessment in 2012. Those efforts were led by Marcella Snipes. Included in this space needs assessment is county administration, the Williamsburg-James City County court system, also the Williamsburg-James City County administration. But we had a collaborative effort between James City County. I wanted to also mention that, Tony's talking about the space needs assessment, that the current and future school needs explored the efficient and effective use of the spaces, both the personal spaces, which were like your office spaces, and then also your support spaces, which were eating rooms and copy rooms, to complete each job function. And so we didn't look so much at the existing spaces that... So our ultimate goal was to create an invaluable resource for future space needs for our massive planning purposes. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Tony Bell with Mosley Architects to provide an overview of the assessment through a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Sean. Superintendent, Madam Chair, our comments will be brief this evening relative to what you've already experienced this evening's presentations. We're really here to answer any questions you might have about the study, and just, as Sean said, give you a brief overview. So the goal of the study was to provide current five, 10, and 20-year planning horizons, the amount of square footage need for the James City, Williamsburg-James City County Public Schools Administration offices. And we used the Williamsburg-James City County population range provided by the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. That's where we got that information. The goals would be to develop space metrics to determine the amount of space needed for individual job functions, to evaluate utilization of existing space, and look for efficiencies and also inefficiencies that you're currently experiencing. We don't want to repeat inefficiencies that you have now. We want to alleviate those in the future. We'll apply the space metrics and the best practices to achieve a baseline for the space needs. And this document, this comprehensive plan is to be used to develop a future facilities master plan, which can then be used for forecasting capital improvement projects which may be anticipated in the future. Our approach, we started with looking at past studies and project givens. We had a kickoff meeting with all the key staff. We distributed questionnaires to the individual stakeholders. We then conducted interviews with those stakeholders. And that was comprised of the Superintendent, her senior leadership team, and other directors and senior supervisors of the administrative staff. Following that, we developed a baseline space needs document, which was then distributed back to the staff. We conducted a benchmark analysis using Albemarle County and Hanover County. You may say, well, why did we use them? Their current populations are approximately what we anticipate Williamsburg and James City Counties collective population. Their current populations are approximately what we anticipate Williamsburg and James City County's collective population to be 20 years from now. So you're currently combined about 95,000 people. They are about 115, 120 today, which is where you're anticipated to be 20 years from now. So we use them as a benchmark, not as a determiner of space, but as a benchmark. And we challenge the different criteria that are provided to us by your staff to confirm, is this really a need or is this a want? And you can, you know, your staff will attest to you, we didn't just take it on face value. We looked at and scrutinized every number and challenged it. But then we also prepared some existing space exhibits. We reviewed that space needs draft with Dr. Heron and her staff and her senior leadership team. We prepared a draft report that was reviewed by executive leadership. Obviously, we're reviewing this tonight with you, and we will be presenting it in the future with, to the Board of Supervisors and preparing a final report that you will hopefully carry forward. Now, this is a living, breathing document, as you will see. So very first team that we interviewed, the communications and engagement, that's not what they refer to anymore, right? Today, they're the Strategic Communications Office. So as you go about your normal daily activities moving forward, this document will be updated so it'll always provide a planning horizon for you moving forward. So in about 10 years, you'll pick this document up. It may or may not have been implemented yet, but you'll be moving forward to its full implementation as you go about your daily activities. So these are the 11 groups that we interviewed and discussed space with. These are the facilities that were included in the study, the school administration and the annex in which we currently are sitting, and also the WJCC School Operations and Maintenance Facility where the majority of Marcellus's staff are located. So in terms of the definitions of terms, as you go about reading the report, there's several terms that we use that we want to discuss this evening, just to make sure everyone is crystal clear. One is net square footage. So when we talk about net square footage, we're talking about the area between four walls, like the space we're in now. And as you see on this diagram, Figure A here, the spaces on the top side of the plan in green, the conference rooms and the offices, those are Department A's room net square footages, okay? When we start to talk about departmental net, we not only need those net square footages, but we also need the space between them. That is the space to circulate between those spaces and workstations. Obviously, if we combine, if we slammed all the offices together and the workstations and didn't have any space between them, it would be very hard to circulate within that individual department. So we need to create some circulation space between them, and that's what you see is the department and corridors there in the blue. So highlighted in the blue outline, where you see the fifth, excuse me, the sixth space down in the legend, it says total division space required, Department A, departmental net area in net square feet, okay? That's what you'll be reading as the totals for every one of your departmental teams. And you see, we've created a similar diagram represented in the aqua and the yellow for what we call Department B. Now, after you combine all of the individual departments together, you then need to create a building. And that building has gross square footage, because in between the individual departments, you also have corridors that connect them, and then spaces which serve the building as a whole. And those would include mechanical rooms or shared toilet rooms, or also the walls themselves. So that's what's outlined in red, is the, is the whole building gross square footage. So that's the GSF that you'll see in the bottom rows of the, of the spreadsheets that are in the document. So that we understand net square footage, gross square footage, internal circulation factors, and building grossing and efficiency. Okay. So this is the space need summary. It summarizes all of the space need for the WJCC School Board. It includes the administration, the superintendents, the operations and maintenance department, and the total of all of that square footage currently, gross square footage is about 87,750 square feet. You may ask, well, what does that compare to what we're operating out of now? What you're operating now in terms of gross square footage is approximately 77,900 square feet, a deficiency of approximately 10,000 square feet. A look around in the annex and in the administration building, say, we have plenty of square footage. Indeed, you do have plenty of square footage in this facility, where the majority of the current need deficiency is, is at the operation, operations and maintenance facility. However, there are some deficiencies here, and they're mainly attributable to the efficiency and how the building is currently used. Obviously, this building was formerly a school. So many of the corridors are a little wider than they need to be, and some of the spaces are oversized but are being utilized because they were already there. And that's usual and customary in terms of construction practice when we're reusing or renovating buildings. It doesn't make sense to move a wall two feet just to get it exactly on the programmatic need, because that's cost prohibitive. So for every individual department, you'll see a breakdown, and we're not going to go through all of them tonight, but it goes down to every individual office, every individual file room, every individual support space, whether it be conference room, meeting room, consultation room, how many are required and what the square footage of each space is. Now, we also did some benchmarking, and there is a typo on this slide. You can look for it later after the presentation. But we, again, we don't take everything just at face value, okay? We challenge it, we filter it, and we use these benchmark localities to say, is this the right amount of staff we should have here in Williamsburg-James City County? And it's not always an apples-to-apples comparison. As you probably know, a lot of other school boards and school administration are set up differently. So it's not always an apples-to-apples comparison. Obviously, Albemarle County is counting all their bus drivers in their numbers, and we're not doing that in either Hanover or Williamsburg-James City. So that's skewing some of their numbers. But we use this on an overall basis and to look at some of the individual departments. As we develop the space standards, we didn't obviously accept the space you're in now as the right amount of square feet for individual spaces. Again, some of the offices you are in today are oversized, and some of them are grossly undersized. So we looked at not what you have today, but what is right-sized for moving forward. So that's what you'll see in the space needs. And you'll see a breakdown in the back of the document in the glossary on how these are broken down using the space codes. We also challenged how you're set up today. So if someone's in a private office today, we didn't necessarily allocate them a private office in the future. They may be better served to be in a workstation and to have a shared community conference room for their job function. So as we sat down within the individual departments, we challenged that existing condition or status quo moving forward. We gave examples of, this is an example of the existing space allocations. You have one of these for every one of the facilities, so you can see how the space is currently being used by the departments throughout the county. Now, moving forward, the next step in this process is what's called a master plan. So we'll go from a document which looks sort of like this on how the space is currently being used to how it could possibly be used in the future. What you're seeing here is not Williamsburg-James City County. This is Warren County in northwest Virginia. We did a space needs analysis and master plan for them. And as you can see, there's very amount of, a great amount of delineation on everything on the right-hand side of the plan, but very little on the left-hand side of the plan. That's because the left-hand side of the plan is all new space. So we anticipate an expansion of their existing facility, and it just basically shows how that space would be allocated to the individual departments. Now, this would be on a building level. Also take it to a campus level. So this is Hanover County, Virginia. All the buildings you see there in the light blue were the existing facilities. The buildings you see in yellow were the planned future facilities. And obviously, there were buildings that were planned to be demolished. They're not indicated at all. But this is their 20-year master plan. The building, the big yellow building in the upper-left corner is their new Hanover County Courthouse. That building is constructed. They're now renovating their current courthouses to be used for county administration space. So like your James Blair campus here, where your existing administration annex would be, we may do a master plan of this campus to show how we're going to meet the 20-year space needs in the next step. That Superintendent, Madam Chair, we open it up to questions. So these are your two existing campuses, and we may provide for space here, or we may provide for space elsewhere. That is yet to be determined.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I always like master plans. I think it's great to do those and to really look into the future to make sure that, you know, to figure out where we're going and what our direction is. And Mr. Dow brought his day job into the meeting, so I'll bring mine. So one of the things that we're struggling with is what does facilities look like post-COVID? As far as what's your social distancing, you know, before it was, it was community spaces and lots of, lots of, you know, getting together and communal spaces where people could talk, and now we're not so sure that we're there. And we're also talking about more, you know, working from home and touchdown space where people can come in for a couple of days a week. And so it's, 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 and I know this is a living, breathing document, but it's just going to be interesting to see how that, that thought process and philosophy goes moving forward. And I just wanted to know if you had any comments on that at this point.
I anticipated that question. So obviously, you are correct. The study is based on a pre-COVID world, and we would anticipate at this point that we would at some point return to a pre-COVID world. Now, for Williamsburg-James City County Schools, we think that's fairly accurate. For the Department of Social Services, that may be very different. So we're going to have to look at individual departments and individual functions moving forward and determine, is that exactly on point, or does there need to be some tweaking and adjustment? I think if we go to a more touchdown space environment, there may certainly be workstations, but they could very much be smaller. In terms of the sharing versus the individual workstations which are dedicated, i.e., would individual, would everyone have an individual 80-square-foot workstation or a 15-square-foot workstation that would be shared by multiple occupants? That is yet to be determined. I would envision probably individual dedicated, but smaller if we go to the touchdown. Again, you are accurate in that, you know, the push has been to smaller workstations, more collaboration space, more, more networking within the individual departments.
Right. That's going to, you know, how that, how that comes out of this is, and, and one of the things I think that this is, this has been, if there's anything good about it, people realize that they don't have to come to the office, and that they, and the managers realize they don't have to manage their people, you know, by fog and a mirror, they came to work that day. And so I think that's, I think that's going to be a good long-term thing about this, and it's going to be much more broad than, than I think that we have anticipated prior to this. And so it'll just be interesting to see. So, so when we talk about our, the needs assessment for the administration, and I saw you have in here, you know, existing and future, because the future doesn't envision a James Blair reorganization, does it? I mean, it's, it's.
A James Blair meeting, the middle school?
Meaning here, this, this building.
We don't know that yet. We have not gone to the master plan level. This is just the space needs. This is just the numbers. So in, you know, in terms of where we go from here and planning for this campus, whether it be reuse of this existing admin and annex, that has not yet been determined.
I hope it wasn't determined, it's determined not to use these buildings.
Here, here.
I think that is the consensus, Mr. Kelly.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm good.
So they can take their cockroaches with them, but yeah.
Ms. Cook.
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for being here. I appreciate it very much. So I have a question. Did you consider school board space in this?
We did.
So a dais, a meeting room?
We did.
And that's included?
It is.
Okay. And then with regard to your projections using HRPDC data, one of the things that we hear often, I don't know if you looked at our enrollment projections at all to inform your thinking about school division size, but one of the things we often hear is that we have a disproportionately large percentage of older adults living here. So, so that, so far, that hasn't played out in a smaller number of school-aged children. Actually, we have the same number where we have a deficit is between 18 and 64. But just, you might get that question. Have you, have you thought about that? Are you ready to address that question?
We anticipate that, Ms. Cook, in that we would anticipate that in the future the proportion would remain generally the same, i.e. that it wouldn't vary greatly moving forward. There may be more people, but the proportion between student age and elderly would still remain in the same proportions, that they wouldn't skew further than they're already skewed, if that makes any sense.
It does. So I just wanted to make sure, because that's one of the things we often hear, is we shouldn't, you know, build any new school space, because the only population that's growing is older adults. And that is not necessarily true. Additionally, I just have to ask, the benchmarking with Hanover and Albemarle, I mean, the differences there, do you, I mean, does Hanover outsource everything? Like, why, why are their numbers so small? Am I misreading that?
Again, it's, it's not a good apples-to-apples individual line item. We can start to look at those. Like, if you look at HR, that was pretty close.
Right.
But when you look at some of the others, you're obviously looking at apples and oranges.
Right.
So without going down and starting to look at individual line items, it's tough to give an answer.
Yeah, and I, you know, you state very clearly in your report that there is no, you know, each school division is unique and how, and so I understand that you modeled this on our divisions, and our division and our division needs based as informed by staff, which I really appreciate. But that benchmarking really threw me, because they were wildly different.
They were.
And, but you don't have a.
I don't have a good explanation for you on the school side. It would be, we can look at it also from the county side, and you'll see that the differences aren't as startling, yes. I will say, for example, Albemarle, who had a pretty large number of staff, I said, they've included all their bus drivers in their staffing. We have not when we looked at Hanover and Williamsburg-James City County. Albemarle also, their number's really big, have included all of the staff for facilities and maintenance. So right now, I believe James City County provides a lot of your bigger picture, facilities and maintenance, capital projects, things of that nature.
Just saying, yeah.
Again, we'd have to look at the individual line items to discuss the discrepancies.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't, yeah, I'm not that curious. I just, it was.
But I think when you look at like Superintendent, HR, finance, those were more consistent.
And then my last question, I'm not sure if it's for you or the county, is a process question. You know, I asked this of the Health Department, if we were going to look into testing, is that the school division's job or the Health Department's job? So just in terms of master planning, I mean, usually if we needed a new central office, that would be in our CIP request, but this is a, a study that the county is undertaking and including the schools, which we're grateful for. But if you could help me understand, I know it's going to this, this Board of Supervisors next, but who's, who's on first? What's, if someone could explain that to me.
Want me to take that, Sean, or would you like to?
Is it, well, is this as far as hitting the second step, which is the facilities master plan? Is that what you're asking?
Sure. And then are we then, is, are the schools' central office and facilities needs part of the county's central master plan?
I don't think that's been decided. I know when we were asked, invited to take part in this, we weren't sure of the parameters or where it would go next. And so I think we're, this, the purpose from our perspective was just to see what space needs we would actually need moving forward. If it starts, if we go into a sit master planning, I think that would be a discussion with the board as well to see how we want to be part of all of that.
Ms. Boone is nodding.
This point due to all of us, we don't know when the master.
Okay.
For any of us. So I, I think those are conversations that. Forward, but. All that was going. Thought it would, you know, courthouse.
Yeah. And it's very helpful. Thank you, Ms. Boone. I appreciate that. Thank you. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, the only thing, what I'm reminded of.
Yeah, the only thing, what I'm reminded of is, I, over at the college, when the hospital was removed, suddenly there was money to build a building for the School of Education. And one of the things that happened is all of the players were not involved in the discussion of the master plan, what it was going to look like, all that kind of stuff. And everybody, not everybody, people talked about, oh, we need to have these open spaces where we can have little, little alcoves or students will get together, doc students will get together. All the offices were on the second floor, faculty offices, went all around that edge of that space. And the thinking was, oh, this will be great. The faculty will be closer to the students will be able to. Ultimately, what happened, faculty kept their doors closed. There was too much noise in the area. And the other thing that began to happen, students not using the space. That building has a huge amount of space. All the office spaces used, all the classrooms, but these open areas, they're, it's like a waste. It's incredible to walk through that building and, and I won't mention who the architects were. And, and to be honest, it's not, it isn't always the architects. It's also the people, deans, vice presidents, who want to see what. At that, but, but for me, it's really critical to have all the players involved, you know, as you're, as you're working through and developing a master plan. Because that's one of the things that came out. Five, five or six years later, faculty hated. We even, they had doors that because they thought it was a safety regulation, had to stay shut. Turned out that was absolutely false. They didn't have to stay shut. So I'm, I'm, I'm really, you know, I'm very much interested in, in, I get the office space and, and all those other kinds of, but I'm really interested in, because we need those other spaces. It's going to be, how's the configuration? Best way to use. Just a. Master. Really unfortunate because they came up with a plan that looked nothing like any building on the college. Got away from who they were. Again, we're not, we're not, that's not going to happen to us.
It's not. We will have all stakeholders involved at the table.
Okay.
Additional questions?
None for me. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
I do have one question, but maybe this is more for Dr. Heron. Mr. Kelly, you're making me think about post-COVID. And so with our virtual academies that we're standing up, what, what do we think might be the implication of capital space, not, not central office space, but additional school buildings? How will, could the virtual academies impact the need for space?
I think it's way too early to, to answer a question like that. I, I do think we're standing up an academy and if it's very successful, it may go on after this year on a much smaller scale. We just don't know. If it were to happen, then it would start to impact the need for space at levels in the buildings. But I would hate to check something that I really don't know anything about right now.
Any additional questions for the architects? Moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for.
Sorry to keep you out late.
Thanks for staying so long.
Our pleasure.
I can't wait to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to board matters. Dr. Beers, I'll start with you.
Okay, I, just a couple of things. I also, some of you mentioned this, I very much want to thank the governing bodies and other community resources for helping us out with that internet connectivity for all students in, in all our schools. I also want to commend the superintendent and staff for that return to learn plan. I think you said it and I really believe it, we are ahead of the curve. We have been ahead of the curve and it's all due to your insight and staff and, and working together to make this, you know, possible and as successful as I think it will be. So I, I very much appreciate that. And I actually am very excited about the master plan. I'm very, you know, we, it is long overdue and it's been over 20 years and we've grown a lot and things have happened and I look forward to that. The only caveat I had was, geez, just remember, you know, the best way to use the spaces that you have and, and we don't want to waste those.
Dr. Beers, Ms. Young?
Okay, thank you. First, first of all, I'm sorry, I missed my opportunity with Ms. Ewing because I had requested that in the future that we would also receive an update from county revenue to make sure that, I mean, because that's going to impact our budget and whatever budget we present. So I just went like that. But, okay, at the onset of COVID-19 in Virginia and the statewide quarantine, Governor Northam designated healthcare workers, firefighters, police and grocery stores as essential. Those referred to as essential have worked tirelessly to provide, provide services. And among those jobs that the governor, Governor Northam should have declared essential were teachers. Teachers are essential to a community recovering from the devastation of this quarantine. And I had asked that Governor Northam rethink and consider the importance of teachers and the economic and social well-being of our state and declare them essential. As Ms. Cook stated in her remarks last meeting, Williamsburg-James City County is one of the areas in Virginia most impacted economically by the quarantine. In order for life to return somewhat to normal, school needs to be in session for family life to resume. When parents can't work because of teaching or supervising the attention of their children during virtual learning, they can't work to pay for housing, food, transportation and other essentials. When parents can't work, they lose homes, their jobs, their careers, their cars and businesses close, which I am experiencing that because I have neighbors who are going through it. Our community is devastated and I think most of us recognize that this is true. And I personally don't want this to happen or to continue to happen. The superintendent has presented a plan that allows for movement from Path One to Path Four, which is the normal school opening. WJCC will be opening on September 8th with virtual learning, Path One. This decision was not made lightly. The safety and health of students, teachers and families were the highest priority, which I commend our school division for because that's where our priorities should be. But during this time, teachers were surveyed and asked what they would need to feel safe and to return to school. 283-plus teachers stated they needed accommodations for masks to, to not working directly with students. I have yet to hear from those teachers that are willing to begin working directly with, with students in Path Three or in normal working conditions. And if you are out there, we need to hear from you, or I hope at least that you have shared your thoughts with Dr. Heron or HR. As a primary teacher, I am struggling to understand how virtual learning is going to meet the needs of K-3 students, although I have a much better idea after tonight, which I will concede. I see a plan to meet the needs of K-3 students initially if we go into Path Two, which warms me greatly. Fourth to fifth grade students, special education students and ELL students, I think, are all being considered. But I am concerned over the lifelong impact this is going to have on their education. Now, there are private schools reopening with in-person learning near us. Many parents are opting to send their children to private school or homeschool. And I personally know of one family that has worked with three other families, rented a space and hired a retired teacher to teach their children this year. Why? Because our decisions affect the lives and livelihoods of families in this area. As teachers know, I am one of your biggest advocates on the WJCC school board and I want you to be safe. I support Dr. Heron's decision for this nine weeks and I hope we will move forward on after that. I believe that asking for year-long virtual learning is premature and unnecessary. Dr. Heron should be given the flexibility to choose the best course for our schools. I would also ask teachers, have you been shopping at Walmart, Publix, Home Depot, anywhere? Or have you met socially with family or friends to eat out at a restaurant, your backyard, your home, at the beach? You have discovered already that you cannot live your life worrying about COVID constantly. Be careful, but take some advice from another calamity. Keep calm and carry on. This pandemic will come to an end. We're already hearing some, some tidbits about, about it. And since March 12th, when WJCC's closed, there have been 1,700, I've had to update this after a meeting tonight, 1,775 identified cases of COVID in Williamsburg-James City County. And as of today, 158 people have been hospitalized and 62 people have died. I was unable to find out how many other people have died from unrelated issues during this same period of time in this area, but there have been other deaths, I can assure you, just because of the age of our population. According to the internet, 8,000 people die in the United States daily from causes completely unrelated to COVID. And during my lifetime, there have been other pandemics such as AIDS and H1N1 and annually we are continually reminded to get our flu shot, just like we were tonight. We have never shut down our lives, instead have chosen to take precautions. We've received instructions from the CDC on how to remain safe during COVID, wearing a mask, social distancing, washing our hands, often extra cleaning. And let's do that and prepare for the future return of students to school. And in closing, I just want to thank the school division because I think that's where we're headed and I appreciate that, Dr. Heron. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I too want to extend my thanks to staff for today, today's presentation, presentations in preparation of the meeting. It's a lot of work and we, I appreciate everything that goes into not only preparing for these meetings, but the, the work that goes into really standing up a whole new way of, of educating our kids, at least for the next nine weeks, if not beyond. And, and Mr. Kelly said this many months ago and I'll just echo it again, I think we should echo it at every meeting, you know, unless and until we see better data from those dashboards, you know, we're looking at more and more of this until we all start, you know, doing a better job of socially distancing and wearing our masks and doing all the, the non-pharmaceutical interventions, as Dr. Beers says. So, so please do that so that we can all get back to normal as soon as possible. And then I just wanted to thank Dr. Heron and her staff also for responding to all the parent concerns about the high school schedule for this year. I know a lot of calls are coming in and I think the customer service is excellent. So I appreciate, appreciate your reaching out. It was a pretty seismic change, particularly for those who were those, you know, 100 or so students who wanted to do early college. So I know you're making it at work and I appreciate that, that extra touch of customer service. So thank you. I'm Madam Chair.
Ms. Cook, Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be honest, I kind of had every intention of just kind of laying low during this portion and heading out, but a few things do come to mind. Ms. Young did share quite a bit there and it really kind of caused me to contemplate, you know, it does kind of fold in. There's a piece of, of what Ms. Young shared that really kind of falls into what Dr. Heron intends to see occur in that Path One where, you know, part of that strategy is to bring teachers in for two days a week and in that, offer them a little bit of comfortability in returning to school, returning to the classroom, knowing that it's safe, seeing that it's safe and that we can continue to progress through this path because everybody, nobody can debate that in-person learning is the best, the best strategy for students. So from what I heard from, from Ms. Young, I kind of see that folding into your strategy to easing tensions, easing anxieties for teachers that, that we desperately do need in the classroom when it's appropriate. Now, I would agree. I think we need to know, I would like to know. So we, we often say that we hear from the loudest minority and we've heard from the loudest parts of the community and we've heard from the loudest teachers that say, you know, not, not me, how dare you. But, you know, this has caused me to consider, you know, where are those teachers that are not in that vulnerable category that are perhaps willing to? You know, maybe they could step forward and say, you know what, when it is appropriate, I am ready. And I think that would bode well for, for this division and for especially all the efforts that central office staff have put forward to make their jobs effective and, and even accessible during these next several weeks. So that, I think that's something that I would, I would agree with, Ms. Young. Who are you? Are you willing? And, you know, let's, let's get ready to get back to work in person when it's appropriate. You know what? There was something else on my mind. It escaped my thoughts at the moment because I didn't write it down, but, well, that's what it was. So I just wanted to thank, you know, central office. I'm generally, genuinely excited to know that we are, Dr. Heron, you and your staff are standing up virtual academies and that these could be the beginnings of something really fantastic down the road where it's not a, you know, where it's not a response to a pandemic, but it's a response to, you know, a, a community's need and a family's need. I've, I have spoken with several parents recently that say, you know what, my kids have been going to, well, I won't name that academy, but a certain academy online has just been the best thing for our students. And I've thought for a while, well, why can't we do that here locally? Well, we can and we are and we're going to improve upon it. It's going to be fantastic. So I really am genuinely excited about this new adventure. It's a shame that it came out in this way, but I imagine it was in the back of your mind for a while too. So I'm genuinely excited about the fruit that it would bring for so many families that would lean on it as a resource for them, as appropriate would be for certain families. And that's really all I wanted to add today, but thank you for that, Dr. Heron.
Mr. Dowell, Ms. Hummel?
I don't have a whole lot to add other than I, I want to thank all of the teachers that have been working all summer long. I personally am exhausted. I'm exhausted with thinking about this and the, trying to do the dual modality, trying to plan for it, being, losing sleep over the sadness of not being able to provide the kind of experience that you know is the right experience. And then at the same time of being exhausted, realizing like what Mr. Dowell said, this is creating not only a disruption, but an acceleration of, of not only higher ed and K through 12, but just, it's accelerating what, what's, what the future of education is going to be like in our country. And so although I am totally exhausted, I'm sure everyone else is too, at some point there will be some very positive things that come out of this struggle that we're dealing with right now. So I just want everyone to, to stay motivated, stay positive despite your exhaustion and realize that there will be an end in sight. We will come through this. We will get better and we're going to come through stronger than before. So carry on. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Mr. Kelly?
You're not exhausted because of your exercise rings?
No, I'm not exhausted because of that.
I really don't have a whole lot to add. I, I will be honest, when I looked at the agenda tonight, I kind of anticipated a shorter meeting, but I did not, I did not realize how comprehensive and informative all the presentations would be tonight, from the Health Department to the return to learn, to the Mosley Architects and, and everything in between. So I just want to thank staff and the Health Department and, and the, the architects for all the work they did tonight and. and the informative presentations and what they presented. I really appreciate, I really appreciate that, and it was time well invested. So I just want to thank everybody for the good, hard work that they did in putting that together, for the good, hard work, particularly for our staff developing the virtual learning academy and, you know, our whole return-to-learn plan and all the work that all of our administration has done and that a lot, a lot of our teachers have also done, too. So I just want to thank everybody for the great work they've put on and put in. And there's still going to be some bumps in the road, and I do ask for patience from the community. You know, we're not necessarily building the airplane we're flying, but it's probably on the runway. And so, you know, just have a little patience, and we'll get through it. And, you know, as Ms. Hummel said, we'll get through it, and we'll all be, we'll all be better for it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I too would just like to thank staff and would like to share with the community while staff have been working very hard and very long days to create a virtual academy and to create online learning for the first nine weeks, we also conducted summer school. And I want to thank staff for celebrating our students who graduated a couple of weeks ago. So our staff have been very busy. Mr. Dow and Ms. Young and I were able to participate and celebrate with those students who completed with the class of 2020. So many saucers are in the air, and so our staff are probably just as exhausted as Ms. Hummel said. And so I just want to thank you for being able to do so many things at the same time. Want to remind the community, get your flu shot. I got mine. They're out there. You can get them. And then, you know, at the end of the day, I know in my heart and my bones that Dr. Heron has made the right decision for these first nine weeks. And it's sad. It's not what any of us wanted. It's not what we know is best for our students. And I know families are going to struggle. I personally am going to struggle with my two students who will be home. It's a whole new world. And as Ms. Hummel said, you know, I think COVID is going to kind of rewrite the face of K-12 and higher ed. And so all of us will be responding to this uniquely and differently. And so I just ask the community to, again, to bear with us and be patient. We're all in this together. But looking at news, information that's, you know, across the country and looking at what other communities have chosen to do and then have changed their mind, I think it's better to at least make what looks like the best decision for now for us and at least not have to change your mind midway through that. So hang in there, WJCC. We are WJCC strong, and we will get through this. It's not, it's not the first nine weeks that any of us had ever anticipated at any level. Thank you to everyone for continuing to support our schools and to support each other. We're just going to have to support each other. So moving on to upcoming events, Policy Committee is meeting on September 17th.
Policies? Okay, and then are we going to bring the other?
Oh, that's, okay, so we're going to bring that. So 8:00 AM in Central Office in Room 108. And then upcoming meetings, our next school board and closed session will be on September 1st here in the Annex, closed session at 6:00 PM, followed by work session at 6:30. And then September 15th here in the Annex, a closed session at 6:00 PM and the regular meeting beginning at 6:30. And unless there are additional comments, this meeting is adjourned.